Please rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, this county commission meeting of Sumner County is now open pursuant to adjournment. God bless this country and this honorable commission. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Brown will lead us in invocation tonight.
Let us pray. Lord, as we enter your throne room, we are always mindful of the fact that we are your children, that we are in awe of you. We covet all the blessings that you give us each and every day. And as a county, we are always looking towards you for guidance, to help us to live the lives that we should, to be the examples that we should be to one another. Be with us as we deliberate tonight. Give us that extra measure of wisdom that is necessary to discern the things that are about the county's business. Give the people of this county the opportunity to excel above. Give them the opportunity to help one another. And also give us the welfare that is necessary to conduct ourselves. Lord, we're always striving to do those things that your son did upon this earth and his teaching that is before us. We also pray for the other elected leaders of this land, that they will consult your word, that they will go to you in prayer before they make decisions. Be with us tonight. We ask this in your son's name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Remain standing, please. The clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I plead to the right of the United States of America and to the report of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, and the clerk will call the robe.
Each commissioner record your presence.
We have twenty-three commissioners present tonight. I think that Commissioner Pomeroy is not here. I have not heard from him, but I see his seat is vacant. All right. Thank you very much for that information. We now want to have the approval of the regular agenda and consent agenda. Do I have a motion? Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. And then we have approval of the consent agenda. Do I have a motion? And a second. All right. All in favor signify by saying aye. All right.
We reconsidered the last. I was in the queue, but I never got recognized before the approval of the agenda.
All right, go ahead.
I wish, under the Health and Emergency Services, item number one, resolution 2306-21, appointment of John Michael Pauls as Emergency Medical Service Chief. I'd like to re-roll that one month, please, to July.
All right. We are going to go through a vote. All right. I will, we will have a vote to reconsider. You know what the, what is on the agenda as far as the commissioners' thoughts? So is there any discussion to that? Commissioner Ring?
This has been discussed for several months. I'd like to wonder why it's been, they want to roll it to next month.
Well, we'll find that out maybe if we get to that point. All right, put that on the board, clerk, to reconsider. Commissioner Harrison? An error? Okay. All right, please, to reconsider. Yes. A yes vote is to reconsider, no is not. There are fourteen yes and nine no. So we will reconsider that, and I apologize to the commissioner. I did see you in there. I looked at you, but I did not call your name. I apologize. All right, anyone wanting to speak to this? Commissioner, would you?
I'd be glad to, Mr. Chairman. I just, I think really and truly this needs some more time so we can be able to actually have the job description of what we're looking at. I, as a commissioner of the Fifth District, have some concerns. It's been brought to my attention. So in order to better serve my citizens, I would like to just roll one month. So I can make a more conscious decision.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does this not require just an up or down vote in front of this body?
That's what we're voting on.
But if we send it back, it's already been appointed, put forth by the county mayor, which it is his, under his purview. I don't understand why we can't just do an up or down vote.
It is under his purview. I'm not questioning that, but it's to the authority of this commission as to when it will be dealt with.
Okay.
That's my opinion. All right. All right, we will vote. I'll ask clerk to put that on the, on the board. All right, this is the vote. The other was to hear this again. But this is the vote to put it off for a month.
Each commissioner record your vote.
With thirteen votes, this commission will not consider this issue tonight. So you may strike that from your agenda. I would like to, for you to bear with me on this in that we will have recognition of the public after the report of the chair so that we can take care of that before we get into a lot of conversation.
Can we just permanently make it so that the report of the chair is before the recognition of the public? Because we seem to do that just about every month.
I, I think that would probably be a good idea. We'll, we'll look at that in legislation.
Thank you.
Approval of the minutes? Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. I do need to mention to you too that the Planning Commission has taken off 2306-11. So if you will take that from your agenda, that will probably be heard next month. Twenty-three oh-six dash eleven. Now, before we begin with the report of the chair, let me say that this is the night that we, as you know, that we set the county property tax rate and we approve all county budgets. I'm expecting to get out of here on Tuesday. Not tonight, okay? So I would, I would ask that we stick with what we need to say, not a lot of things that we don't have to say, and get the county's business done. And I'm sure they would like to go home too, instead of sitting here and hearing us. So if you will, I would appreciate that. Yes, item nine and ten need to come off according to that item that we had. So you will please admit both nine and ten. Yes. All right, you have the Veterans Service Report that is attached. And then we have certificates of recognition. And I would first like to ask that commis-, that, I was just about to demote him to commissioner. Well, I'd like to ask that Coach Daniel Brooks come forward. And we'll have the soccer team come in a few minutes, but we would like for him to come first. This is really a sad evening for the Magnet School and for a lot of guys that are here from the Magnet School that are on the soccer team. The significance of what I'm saying tonight is that this man is a person who is not a regular faculty member. He gives of himself to coach the soccer team at the Magnet School, and he has done really a wonderful job at doing that. He was recently voted the 2023 Sumner County Coach of the Year for the third year. He is retiring as the boys' soccer coach this year, not because he doesn't like the school, not because he doesn't like the kids. It's because he needs to spend the time with his family. And he, I want to tell you, he started coaching under Coach Jim Carr, who was the first coach there. And then he took over the head of the program from 2019 to 2023. And the past five years as a head coach with a record of fifty-six, twenty-nine, and eight. They have lost only eight times to a Class A opponent. And let me say, the Hendersonville Standard recently described, I think the coach probably read this, the program at Merrill Hyde as a powerhouse of Sumner County. That was a quote from the person who wrote the article, and it truly is. They have also won all of these honors and all of the trophies and the recognition in, with the fact that they are the fourth smallest soccer program in the state of Tennessee. Now, that's significant. They won three district championships under this man, three regional championships. They reached the state tournament semifinals the past three years in a row. And in 2021, the state tournament semifinal appearance, first ever trip to the state tournament for the Merrill Hyde Boys Program. He was awarded the 2019 Region Four District Eight Boys Soccer Coach of the Year. Received the 21-22 Sumner County Coach of the Year Award. And the first time ever a coach from Merrill Hyde Boys Soccer Program had won that award. He was also nominated to coach the West Team in the 2022 Tennessee High School Soccer Coach Association Senior All-Star Game. He showcased the top seniors and soccer players from all three classes, not just single A. And that was throughout the entire state of Tennessee. And he, he makes a point of the fact that he is proud of the special relationship that he has formed and built with the players. But I can tell you, they appreciate the relationship too that they've had with him. You don't do this fine a coaching job if that's not a two-way street. He is, says that he is blessed to have been a part of such a special program and to carry, hopes that the traditions will be carried on and the excellence at Merrill Hyde. And I can tell you, it's my hope that one day he will come back and join us at Merrill Hyde. But he is an amazing individual who has given of his time like a lot of people in Sumner County. We're blessed with people like this. It helps our schools and school system. Do I have a motion to? All right, now a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Let's give him a round of applause.
Thank y'all so much. First, I want to thank Mr. Hyde and the Sumner County Commission for taking time out of y'all's busy schedule to acknowledge me tonight. I just really appreciate it. I'm kind of at a loss for words, but just feel blessed. Thankful that God led me into this position. Couldn't do what I do without him leading me and giving me the strength to do it. And I'm just thankful for the opportunity, but just thankful for all the boys here tonight and all the boys that have come before me that have played. I'm only a coach. I can't get out there and lace up my boots and go play, so I'm thankful for them, for everyone, for all them just giving me a hundred and ten percent all the time. That's all you can ask as a coach is for your, your team to give you your best. And so I'm just so thankful for that, and I'm thankful for my family. They're, they're probably the ones that have had to sacrifice the most. Get home at eight-thirty a lot, almost every night, eight-thirty, nine o'clock for five months out of the year. And so thankful for them for sacrificing, but my wife, and I've always said that, you know, you have an opportunity to influence twenty to twenty-five kids in a positive manner. And that's, that's a special gift, and so I'm thankful for that. But I would definitely miss this, that's for sure. It was not an easy decision. But yeah, I say my family needs me right now a little bit more than these guys do, but definitely coming back may not be, you know, out of the question one of these days, that's for sure. But I'm very thankful for all of y'all and thankful for the kind words that you had to say, and very thankful for the school administration as well for entrusting this great program with me. So I really appreciate y'all. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like for the soccer team to come forward. They had a very good year, too. You're looking here at the best of the best. They are really some super players. Parents, if you want to take a picture, feel free to get up and walk up here close. It's no, no problem at all. We want to recognize these guys tonight because they they wanted to make a run at the state for their coach. And they worked really, really hard. Of course, they, they wanted to win the state, period, but especially this year because they knew this was Coach Brooks' last year. And they did an amazing job. I got to watch some of the games there at the end and some amazing games and amazing effort on the part of these guys, and some got a lot of individual attention from the newspaper and, and other people. So we are, we are appreciative of these guys. I know a couple of, three of them individually, and they are really good individual citizens as well as good athletes. So we do have a proclamation for them, and I would like to have a motion. And a second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Let's give them a round of applause. Guys, would any of you, let's just see who brave enough, would you like to say anything? Anyone? No? I can't believe Drew is speechless, but anyway. But we appreciate you, and you've done a great job, and I'm going to give this certificate to the coach. And we appreciate all of you. Thank you very much. Thank you. You may be seated.
Oh, yeah, one more thing.
Each of you get one. Now, there's one other group at the school, and just bear with me on this. This may be the only non-controversial thing that we do tonight. We have another really fine group of kids who need to be recognized, and I think most of them are here with their coach. Again, this is a coach who really is an attorney. And we've tried to get him to come on over and just take the coaching supplement, but he won't do it. But anyway, we're very proud of Colton. He was here before, Colton Jones. And I'd like for him to come forward with the tennis team members that are here, if you would. Do you have your trophy with you? Okay. Now, this big, huge trophy you see, you know, I would like for the athletic director at Merrill Hyde to come forward too, Corey Craighead. Corey does an amazing job and spends a lot of time at the Magnet School with athletics. This trophy that is being held here by Eric is the third one consecutively that this group of guys, they have won. Since I think it was 2013, there's only been a handful of schools, maybe three or four, that have accomplished this, or is that right?
Yeah, maybe in other classifications.
Yeah. So it's, it's a rare thing that you do this three years consecutively, and they want to do it the fourth year. So they're, they're shooting for that. We're very proud of their accomplishments as state champions in Class A tennis. And you got to keep in mind that this is a small school to accomplish these kind of things. Of the guys that are at the school and high school, probably what Coach Craig had, a hundred and twenty-five guys to do all sports in the school. It's a pretty amazing factor that, to accomplish that. So we are very, very proud of what they have accomplished. They have not only won this three times, but the members of the team, and I want them to introduce themselves, are stepped forward as I call their name. Tobias Mandeville is quite an amazing tennis player and has done a super, super job this year. Eric Popa with the trophy. And John Wilks. And Declan Clary. And Owen Burke. And Harrison Gill. Harrison, you were left out of the paper. I don't know how that happened. But they, they have really done a fabulous, a very amazing job. Do I hear a motion? Motion by Commissioner Becker, second by Commissioner Teichner. All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose like sign. Let's give them a round of applause. Coach, tell us a couple of things, if you would, about the future of the team.
Okay. Thank y'all for recognizing us again. Always a pleasure to be here in front of the county commissioners. The future looks good. We don't have any seniors this year, so we'll all be back next year. We'll try to win four in a row. Tobias Mandeville has won the last two single state championships, so he'll try to go for three in a row, which I'm sure that's even more rare than a, a team winning three in a row if he were to win three singles titles in a row. And, you know, Eric and John both did great. They won the region in doubles this year. They could very well win the state doubles next year. So we're having great success, and it's just a great group of boys. They work extremely hard, and they represent the school and the county extremely well. We play all the top schools regardless of classification, and so they all know who we are and who these boys are. So very blessed to, to be able to coach them. Thank y'all.
Colton does an amazing job, and he is with the firm that we're more familiar with, McAllister &amp; Bone. And he does this for fun. All right, everyone, please buckle your seatbelt. That was the only fun thing we'll be doing tonight. Oh, I'm sorry. This is, this is a proclamation we do each year, and I almost forgot, Danny. Danny, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to invite up the Sumner Association of Realtors, Board of Directors, those that are here tonight. Jeff Hebbs is here, our CEO, and then many of our, the Board of Directors. Darla Nichols is our president. I'm gonna, I'm gonna see if there's something she would like to say before I read this proclamation. June is Home Ownership Month nationally, and we, we just want to take a minute to recognize the good work people are doing in Sumner County.
Commissioner Sullivan, thank you, sir. Good evening. How's everyone? I am Darla Nickens-Hunley. I am the 2023 President for Sumner Realtors. And on behalf of our Board of Directors, our CEO, Jeff Hebbs, we're delighted to be with you this evening. Across our great country, June is recognized as National Home Ownership Month. This is a time when the real estate industry celebrates and raises awareness on the benefits of homeownership for all those living in America. The history of homeownership goes all the way back to the eighteen hundreds, when most Americans really had no way of owning a home. Our mortgages became common only after the U.S. banking system came into being. Our mortgages became common only after the US banking system came into being after the 1860s National Banks Account. Act, act, I'm sorry. As real estate professionals, it's always good to be reminded of why our work is so valuable to consumers and important in all of our communities. It is our duty to help all Americans realize the dream of homeownership and as you can see, this journey has been going on for now more than a century. But that's what we do and hashtag that is who we are. Again, we thank you so much for having us and we appreciate you all so very much.
Thank you, Darla. We have a proclamation declaring the month of June as National Homeownership Month, whereas June is National Homeownership Month when we promote the benefit of homeownership and recommit to creating opportunities for future homeowners and whereas Realtors across the state of Tennessee strive to ensure that all Tennesseans have the opportunity to achieve the privilege and opportunity to achieve homeownership, which is a centerpiece of the American dream and the pathway of economic well-being and intergenerational wealth building. And whereas the federal government issued a proclamation this month saying in part, during Homeownership Month, we recognize the power of owning a home when raising a family, planting roots in the community or building equality and passing down generational wealth to continue the American dream for generations to come. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Commission on this, the 26th day of June 2023, that June is Sumner County Homeownership Month. And Mr. Sheriff, so move.
Motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Thank you. Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate you so much. Thank you, Senator.
Right. Sheriff, if you could hand me the recognition of the public, those that are speaking on the budget, we will hear you a little bit later, I think is the way we're going to do that. Stephen Puckett, if you would come and give your name and your address, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Stephen Puckett. I reside at 228 Saunders Ferry Road, Apartment 821 in Hendersonville, Tennessee. I want to start out by, and I'm going to be speaking on two issues tonight. One is the Second Amendment resolution you have before you tonight and the second is on the Election Commission Resolution. I want to start out on, with the Second Amendment Resolution by apologizing to the Legislative Committee. I couldn't figure out how to sign up to speak to the committee. As I've recommended to committees before, this commission before, if you could please place the recognition of the public aspect for that, for your committees on podium and also provide a podium for the citizens to speak at, that would be very helpful because that way we know where to sign up and also citizens don't look like, don't look like they're schoolkids on Picture Day on the owl. And not only that, it creates the optics of empowerment of the citizen as opposed to disempowerment. That being said, the information I have for you is that the Second Amendment Resolution is right now being colored by a constitutional amendment that is in the Tennessee General Assembly in the worst possible way. And that constitutional amendment is HJR 0038 by Representative Reedy and it has the legal effect, if it were to be enacted, to effectively establish a Second Amendment right to crime, which is very concerning. That being said, it colors any Second Amendment Resolution across the state right now that are not clearly specifying what doctrine you apply as if it were to apply the absolutist doctrine, which is this notion that you keep, that someone has the Second Amendment right to keep and bear arms for criminal purposes and not just, not just what is often viewed as traditional Second Amendment purposes. As such, you need to clear, I'm going to ask you to send this resolution back to committee so that it can, you can clarify what purposes are keeping and bearing arms are in the Second Amendment and what's outside. Also, it also colors the second, the statement on self-defense, self-defense of what? You know, self-defense of one's ideology. You know, same thing with self-preservation, that's very concerning. And so we need to clarify that as well. Also, we need to clarify what laws we're applying to when we talk about as 1791 because as it says on the seal, the state of Tennessee didn't, wasn't established until 1796. So are we talking about constitutional territorial law? Are we talking about Indian law? In making sure we have that cleared because that section is good, it just needs to be clarified. As well as a technical issue and that is you cite that the governor's proposed red flag law is unconstitutional. You need to cite the court case that, in which that has failed, preferably within the Tennessee District. Otherwise, you need to cite that as the opinion of the county commission. That way you're not coming across as if you are viewing yourselves as the Supreme Court of the United States. And that just gets, that also gives the legislature greater clarity of what to look at. You also need to address, the resolution doesn't speak to Tennessee militia law, which is found in Title 58, Chapter 1, Part 3, as well as Title 58, Section 58-1-104, which is so out of date, it actually runs through the county tax assessor's office. That's actually, so it needs to be updated and clarified. And then the second issue is the, for me, is the Election Commission's resolution you have. I want you all to understand, you are political figures and as political figures, there's a reason why the Election Commission is appointed and its recommendations are made by the parties and the respective party executive committees. As political figures, this resolution, if it were to pass, could disqualify and discredit every election held in 2024 because any candidate could accuse this county commission of rigging the elections. So I ask you to withdraw it and take the matter to your respective, your respective bodies as far as executive committees. Thank you.
Mr. Kevin Baker, 424 AB Road, Wade Road, Portland.
I'm going to be fairly brief. First of all, I don't take it lightly that I have the ability to get up and petition my government. For eight years, I've been doing this individually in small groups to the whole commission and I appreciate every time I have a conversation with you or multiple of you that you listen and we may not always agree, but I do appreciate that. It's been a great working relationship and I do believe that Sumner County is on a path to greatness. But I'd like to talk about petition, I'm sorry, Resolutions 13, 14, 15, 26, 27, and 30. I thought it kind of interesting that we're talking about homeownership month this month and we're going to be talking about the tax rate. Remember, you citizens, you only own that house so long as you pay your property tax. So I appreciate it when we, as a government, keep our property taxes reasonable. Fiscal responsibility impacts every one of us citizens and it hits the hardest for the people that can barely afford it. So I take it seriously when I redress you folks and I hope you take it seriously tonight. The $2.26 property tax rate is great. I think holding the line on that has been a phenomenal job by the Budget Committee and everybody else involved. I appreciate that. Resolution 230614, ending forward Sumner. We don't need to be spending $100,000 on an organization which has not delivered any tangible results. In the eight years, I've never seen them come with any kind of tangible results. We don't need to be funding that. Number 15, Exit 8, we don't need to be using county funding to support a state and a city issue. I think you saw my update today and I addressed that there. Resolution 26, Second Amendment, we support it. 27, Greenways, gosh, it's been a long, long road and some of you have borne the brunt of this personally and for that I apologize. I wish in 2018 we had been more effective and had gotten there sooner because we could have stopped it, but. And then 30, Resolution 30, elections, I do so support this. I've been on the personal receiving end of abuse by our elections administrator and I was saying to our county mayor earlier today that of all of the departments in this building, every single department that I've ever interacted with, I feel like I'm invited in there and treated with dignity and respect, except for one. And number 30 addresses that. So thank you very much and have a great evening.
Hi, I'm Charlene O'Miller. Do I say my name and address? Address? Okay. 143 Rule and Circle, Hendersonville, Tennessee 3705. I'm sorry, I forgot. I'm here to speak about 230630 and I am very interested in our elections to remain unbiased from political influences. I am incredibly concerned, the way that our process is set up has been working for years. You all were elected under this Elections Commission. If somebody has had an issue with the Elections Commission, maybe they weren't violating the laws of the elections in this, in this state or the rules and maybe they were being told that they should not be. But for this specific resolution, I have concerns that there is litigation against this county and that they're trying to use their political influence to try to intimidate somebody to drop their case, which should not happen. If you guys feel like you're in the right, then you guys will win in court. And I feel like there's a lot of facts that are not known to the public now and if you make decisions in a resolution that are considering facts and cases ancillary to what's before this commission, you are going over your bounds to what the courts should be doing. All of us want to have elections with integrity, but the state officials are the ones that determine that, so then there is no bias. There cannot be any accusations of any bias from our current elected officials. Please set aside 230630. It is not in your purview. You guys can email your state representatives with your own personal names. You guys have every First Amendment right to contact your elected officials, but this is not a role of this county commission to use the legislative function to try to, to try to influence our elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Is it Rebecca Goddard?
I'm Rebecca Goddard. My address is 2339 New Hope Road, Hendersonville, Tennessee. $411 million of debt and you guys were left this incredible amount of debt and from the prior commission who irresponsibly and disrespectfully put the county and the taxpayers in a position to, where they either had to raise taxes or make serious cuts. And the job that you all had to do the last couple of months was not anything I don't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't have wanted to see my worst enemy go through that. It was terrible because you had to consider the taxpayers, the county employees, the county properties and keep everything. So I appreciate the hard work that you had to do and, you know, I moved from the capital of irresponsible, reckless fraud, abuse of the taxpayers, which is why so many people from other states have moved from the tax and spend leftist failing states, cities, and counties and moved to places like Sumner. And it was, I chose Sumner because it was not a perfect place, but it was my place and I am making it my place and I will make a voice there and like it or not. You took on a behemoth of debt and had to make hard choices and I watched and I listened and I heard your debates and your concerns for everything in the county and I appreciate as a citizen being heard for the first time in my adult voting life by my, by my elected government. I appreciate your challenge and I see how hard you all worked. The Election Resolution 230630, while I can't think of one person that wants a fraudulent election, so that accusation is absolute horse manure. However, the integrity of the person running the elections is now at a challenge, has fallen by the wayside and things need to be done. The state needs to take over and we need to hand it to them and let them do their jobs and hopefully that they will. But to have someone try to coerce you through lawsuits and litigation and a variety of other minutia and distractions from the good work that y'all are doing, the Election Commissioner has gone a little wacko and I hopefully, and has shown that the integrity needed to run an election is not something that she really has. So we need to move forward, we need to hand it to the state and we need to move on and because we're in a time crunch and getting the elections done. So thank you again for all your hard work. I appreciate it all.
Thank you. That concludes the recognition of the public and we will move forward with our agenda. Financial Statement Memo is attached for your information. Docking Highway Public Works Fund Analysis for 2223. All right, let's just go ahead. Those in favor, do I have a motion?
Or.
And a second. All right. County Mayor?
Include all public comments or are you reserving some for later?
Budget will be later.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor signify by saying aye. Dockading of the highway. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose like sign. All right. Public notice, Madam Clerk?
The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on June 26, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building located at 355 North Velveteer Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Liberty Farm rezoning. Land Solutions Company represented by Lynn Ely, 12th Commission Voting District, Deborah Holmes, applicant is seeking a rezoning from planned unit development to rural residential. Subject property is located at Liberty Lane in Upper Station, Count Creek Road, Gallatin, Tennessee 37066. Is Tax Map 124, Parcel 007.03. Contains 23.59 acres and is zoned planned unit development. This item was deferred at the March 28, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation related to this item on April 25, 2023. to this item on April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. A copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Development Service Department in the Sumner County Administration Building located at three fifty-five North Belvedere Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest or desiring to ask questions concerning this request is invited to join the meeting or call six one five four five one six oh nine seven.
Thank you. Having no one signed up to speak, I declare the hearing closed. Is there a motion to, to request the rezoning? Motion made, is there a second? And second. All in favor, signify, uh, commissioner Wynn.
Just have a couple of questions on this one particular. If I read the packet correctly from the, the planning commission, the PUD is for a green space currently, is that correct?
I will, we have two members representing us on the planning commission and I'll defer to Ms. Miller on that.
I'm for it, to Commissioner Klein, he's the vice chair.
Oh, okay, Commissioner Klein.
Commissioner Wynn, what happened was this was part of a PUD that was annexed and put into the city of Gallatin. This piece of property was left over and remained in the county. It's, a lot of it is in the flood zone or flood plain and the developer simply wanted to be done with the property, so he went with a very low density. Commissioner Holmes is one of the neighbors and she represented at the planning commission meeting that the neighbors would be in favor of, of the zoning and the, the planning commission was in favor of it because it took something out of a PUD back into a rural residential zoning.
Yeah, and, and I guess that's my, I guess my concern and question too, is it's, it's zoned or the PUD is for a green space, it'll remain an open space.
Well, the, the PUD was, uh, it, trying to remember, you, you caught me there.
The, the zoning could have, for the PUD, they could have gone with a much higher
Density, had they annexed it into the city. They chose not to annex it or the city chose not to annex it possibly. So, rather than go with high, highly den, high density as the rest of the PUD was, they decided to just leave it in the county and go with the lower density. So, it wasn't actually, it, it was supposed to be part of an equestrian possibly, they really didn't know what they wanted to do with it. And at the end of the day, it, it, because of the flood plain running on the eastern side of the property, it was just disconnected. And so, they, they decided to rezone it and, and go ahead and offload it. So, to say it was a green space is not necessarily the case. They, it was part of the PUD and it could have gone a lot of different ways and they were getting resistance at many levels.
So, let me ask a question a different way. How is it currently?
Let Josh set a speak to this.
Yes, Josh, would you come forward?
Oh, great. He's the guy who knows.
I apologize, Commissioner, what was your, what was your question there? I apologize.
The PUD is currently in place and what does the PUD say? So, you talked about that before and so, what does the PUD have to say?
Right, so, it was part of the Carrollton Plan Unit Development and as Commissioner Klein said, it was this area across the creek that was, it was reserved on the master plan for pasture land or green space essentially. It has a greenway running through it on the master plan. The, the applicant, the, and essentially it wasn't really zoned to, to do anything building wise with, but it's kind of sat out there and it's been, from my perspective at the departmental level, it's been a, a topic of a lot of consternation and confusion and, and worry by a lot of the residents over the years who've, who've, who've been concerned that eventually that thing is going to get turned into something else. There's, so it's Plan Unit Development, which to a lot of people kind of signifies something, something bad. It's not always, sometimes it's, it's higher density kind of stuff. And so, essentially what the developer seeking to do is to rezone this to rural residential, as we said, that's our low, low density residential zoning. They've turned in a concept plan that shows something like five or six lots, I think, total for this entire property, it's twenty or thirty acres. And, and that's what they would be seeking to do. And then essentially, I think from the neighborhood's perspective, it kind of puts a period on this piece of property, so they know what it's going to be used for, there's no more questions out there anymore about it, turning into apartments or higher density development and that kind of thing. And so, that's, that's essentially what's proposed today is, is a lower residential, lower result, lower density residential kind of a development.
And, thank you for that information, but I'm still missing, i- is it, is it for a green space or pasture land, is that what it is today?
That was what, on the master plan, that's what it was reserved.
Okay. Okay.
Like I said, I think the neighborhood had a lot of concerns that maybe the county wasn't going to live up to that or is going to go to the city and become something else and that kind of thing. So, they're, they're taking this rural residential route is what they're seeking to do.
Gotcha. The larger development, this was green space and you see that it's in a floodway and a flood zone and the question just begs to answer is like, where's the water going to go? And why would we change the zoning on this to put houses on it? And two of those lots are in the floodway. I mean, why would we do that? You know, we hear so much talk about overdevelopment and cotton town and specifically this area and then here we've got a resolution right in front of us that's for more development when it's putted as a green space for no development. Unless I'm missing it. That's all I've got.
All right. Commissioner Holmes.
Commissioner, um, yes, and I agree with all of those things, but living right by there and the threat of that, because it's kind of like, like Josh said, it's kind of been, been in no man's land and it has, it has a city zoning inside the county and the, it's, it's in a, the urban growth boundary and so, if we kind of felt like as, as a community, as the neighbors that live there, that we've kind of been threatened with this overdevelopment, seventy houses, give or take, here or there, changing that zoning into the, to a city type zoning and then that opens it up for a whole new can of worms for those of us in that, that urban growth boundary. So, we felt like in talking with Josh, that this was a safer, a safer situation for us and, and met with the neighbors and, and that was kind of the general consensus of what we came up with. I don't know if that answers your question. Do I feel good about that? Do I want to leave it exactly like it is? Absolutely, like I try to buy it. But realistically, is that going to happen? Probably not. So, that's kind of where we are.
Commissioner Teasner.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if you don't mind, can I halfway, will you correct me if I'm, can I have him correct me if I'm incorrect on something because I spoke with Lynn, the developer, about this and I wouldn't support either way because I told him, I said, I only support what District fourteen and then ultimately what District twelve wants because that's just across the street on the corner from District fourteen, so it's just outside of, of my people's way. And so, the, the reason, if, if, if you don't mind me answering Commissioner Wynn's question, Chairman, Ms. Chairman, is I, the reason why that there's, it is a flood plain and that's the reason why they chose, I think it was five houses and one of them has eleven acres and something and one lot is, one lot's eleven some odd acres, one lot's around eight something and the other three around three acre, three acres lots, somewhere in that ballpark. And, you know, they're, they're spliced up a little bit on the percentages, so, like it's decimal points, so it's not exactly that. But that, it was because of the flood plain and that was to protect the homeowners that were building in that area. But the way that they wanted to do it was because they proposed a few other things, but this land was kind of forgotten about because it was a part of the Carrollton, you know, subdivision and it, it just was dead land because it didn't get pulled into Gallatin, correct? And because it didn't get pulled into Gallatin, they didn't have anything to do with it, so they were going to do like a, one of these type of things that like where that you could pull in and park underneath it and like have all these, all these people that could live above the parking garage area. And that was not something that District fourteen or District twelve wanted. And so, I didn't support it either way and I said, you just need to talk to the neighbors and see what they want. And he drew up something that fol, if you look on the map, just like an aerial of that, it follows the property lines that is true to that area. So, it seemed like that he was really trying to do the thing that the people wanted there. It's hard to know for sure anyone's, you know, intentions or motives, but it seemed genuine. And so, I just, I, I hope that answers your questions because that's why that one, if you see is like around three acres, like three of these lots and then one's like eleven acres because of that flood plain issue and so, so that they could build in a reasonable location that would hopefully not be flooded. So, I hope that answered, I hope you don't mind me kind of breaking rules a little bit. Thank you.
Commissioner Miller.
And I felt just like you did and I'm like, why in the world are we doing anything in a floodway and a flood plain that was supposed to be greens, well, not really green space, but like open area, pasture area. But what would happen if we did not allow something to happen there? They were going to sell it. Actually, they were probably going to ask for it to be, because it's in the urban growth boundary. So, if you're in the urban growth boundary, then you can ask the city to annex with no permission from the county as of right now. So, what would have happened is it would have been annexed into the city and it would have been sold with city regulations for planning and zoning and you probably would have had another whole set of apartments on all of it, except for the floodway because you cannot build on a floodway. But in the flood plain, you can. So, it was, we actually deferred it the first, the first time it came through planning because I was like, no way. We sat down with the owners, the developers and we came up with a plan that was the lowest density that they agreed to because if not, it would have been annexed into the city and you would have had another set of apartments and that is exactly what the neighbors didn't want. The neighbors had a meeting and this is what they decided they could live with.
All right, I think we're ready to vote on this.
Mr. Chairman, so, and I appreciate all the feedback and it, it really leads to another question. If we are to, to rezone this and with what Ms. Miller just described, that, that the landowner can have something annexed into the city, what stops that process by us doing this today? Nothing. That's, that could happen tomorrow, even if we changed the, even if we changed it. All that could still happen. So, that being a reason to, to change a green space into one acre lots or, or to subdivide it, I, I just, I don't buy it, you know? I just, I don't get it. And again, I'll just go back to it, the water runoff from a large neighborhood, where's it going to go? That's a space that's, that it naturally flows into and it's not going to impact anybody. It accomplishes the green space that everybody so claims they desire for that area and if the PUD wants to change again, guess what? It's got to come through here. You get to make that call. Does it stay green or does it get broke up? So, I'm, I'm not going to support it. Thank you.
Commissioner Sho.
Call a question.
All right. Is there a second?
Say.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That was pretty overwhelming. All right. We're on this motion now. If you would, we'll put it on the board.
Each commissioner record your vote.
Is it O'Nan? Okay, it's O'Nan. All right, the vote is twenty to two with one abstention, so it is, we will proceed with that. And number ten, approved request for zoning, there's no one that signed up for that, so we will ask the clerk to read the notice. All right, we had no one signed up for this, so I'll entertain a motion.
So.
Motion and a second. Madam clerk, if you can put that on the board.
That's ten.
That's ten.
Each commissioner record your vote.
All right, we have a twenty-three to zero vote. And the next item is twenty-three oh six twelve because eleven was omitted for tonight. Do I have a motion? Motion and a second. If the clerk will put that on the board for us.
This is twelve.
This is twelve.
Each commissioner record your vote.
All right, the vote was twenty-three to zero, that passes. That brings us down to budget hearing and public comments for discussion on tax levy. And following this, somewhere close to this, we'll take a short break, but we'll go through this first. We have two people who would wish to speak. Mayor Jamie Clary of Hendersonville. Right here. Okay, you're on that.
Am I good? Okay, okay. I'm Jamie Clary, I'm the mayor of Hendersonville and I'm a resident of Hendersonville, one twenty-five North Shadow Haven Way. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm accustomed to this position as mayor of Hendersonville. I've listened to more than three hundred people speak in six and a half years at local government meetings. This is the first time I've been a speaker, so I appreciate your patience with me. Several members of the Hendersonville Board and residents are here with me in support. I've asked them to stand in the interest of time. I appreciate them being here, but the interest in time, we're not all going to speak, it's just going to be me. So, where we are right now is that the city has two options regarding the requirement to close the railroad crossing near exit eight. Those options are, we can construct a tunnel now or we can do it when construction costs go up. go up. The city is obligated to build the tunnel via a contract from several years ago before I was mayor. Here's that contract. TDOT has spent millions of dollars toward this project and is now waiting for Hendersonville to live up to the contract by completing the construction. We don't have a choice to build it. We can build the tunnel now, or we can wait till the construction costs go up. TDOT's safety concern has also increased. The railroad crossing has always been the first issue. Recently, TDOT Steve Allen wrote an email to us. He's the director for Strategic Transportation Investment for TDOT. He wrote that traffic is now backing up onto Vietnam Veterans Boulevard frequently each day. Drivers are going from sixty-five miles per hour to a dead stop. He wrote, "We have all been extremely fortunate that no catastrophic crashes have occurred to date." And those drivers are not Hendersonville residents, they are residents of the rest of the county. Some of you have mentioned that Hendersonville owes the county money for appraisal work because of changes to the billing a couple of years ago. The County Technical Advisory Service agrees with that position. However, the Municipal Technical Advisory Service says that the city doesn't owe that money. I have to listen to MTAS, not CTAS, but the two of them disagree. I cannot write checks for something that MTAS says we don't owe. However, Commissioner Mark Harrison had idea that I think is very reasonable. This came up a couple of weeks ago. He brought up that idea during a Budget Committee meeting, and I said then that I would look into it, and I've looked into it since then. Some of these charges are uncontested. Only a portion of the charges are in dispute between CTAS and MTAS, so let's address the undisputed portion. I will continue to hold the disputed portion in escrow until CTAS and MTAS or the state attorney general comes to an agreement, but the undisputed portion can be released. If the county commission will approve funding for Exit Eight tonight, I will write a check to the county for four hundred and forty thousand dollars tomorrow, and another check to the county for two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars on July first. I appreciate the idea that came from Commissioner Harrison and feel that it is a reasonable compromise. That is more than six hundred thousand dollars that you can spend on your constituents in any district of the county. I appreciate your time, and I'm available for questions. We'll stick around. Thank you all.
Thank you. Kaye Brooks.
My name is Kaye Brooks. I live at one-twenty-three Trousdale in Hendersonville. First, let me commend specifically my Commissioner Matt Shoef for the strong focused leadership he provided as chairman of the Budget Committee. He, the Finance Department, and the rest of the Budget Committee ensure that we don't have a property tax increase, and that's tremendously important in these times. Thank you. Thank you so much. From the start, no property tax increase was Commissioner Shoef's first priority. A second, a close second, was ensuring that county employees got to keep the additional income COVID legislation had provided. He succeeded on both points with the help of equally committed commissioners and staff. And again, I thank you all so much for that. However, as good a budget as it is, as a Hendersonville resident and Sumner County taxpayer, I want to strongly urge you to amend that budget in two ways. First, via twenty-three six fourteen, do I have that number right? By removing a hundred thousand dollars for Forward Sumner. It's belt tightening time, seriously. I don't believe Forward Sumner needs this tax money more than Sumner County taxpayers do. Secondly, via twenty-three oh six dash fifteen, which defunds the Exit Eight project from three-eight-six and moves that money toward debt service, which is sorely needed. Your support of this exit funding will help in debt-struggling taxpayers in one way or another to some thirty million dollars. We can't afford that. We all know that, especially for a project conceived so long ago in light of the expansion of three-eight-six now in the works and the languishing of another development very nearby. As near as I can tell, this project goes back to two thousand and eight. That's fifteen years ago. Life in Hendersonville and Sumner County has changed a great deal in that time, as you very well know. In two thousand and eleven, a previous commission resolved to be debt-free by two thousand and twenty-three. Well, here we are, four hundred million odd dollars in debt. It's our shame that they did that to us, but we have to do something to fix that. Spending more money, committing to more money, is not the fix. Like the Comer Barn, this body has a chance to change course, cut our losses, move on, and reassess and refocus on our current and future needs, not the needs as seen way back in two thousand and eight. Every contract can be broken. Please don't send what little good money we have after this bad and outdated project. We're better served by making a serious effort to increase the debt service until that four hundred million dollars is paid off. Thank you.
I think that was everyone who had signed up. I will ask Chairman of Budget to, if he would like to speak to twenty-three oh six and introduce it, the tax levy.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Before I introduce this, I actually have a question, and I'd like to direct that question to the Finance League. Given that we do have a, an amendment on twenty-three oh six dash fifteen, and that is a penny, should we, should we switch these? Should we address twenty-three oh six fourteen and twenty-three oh six fifteen before we set it at twenty-three oh six thirteen?
I think it would be clear to amend it that way if you can.
Okay. So, Ms. Chairman, I would like to, and I should have done this at the beginning, but I didn't think about it until I, I got to examining the logic of it. I would like to make a motion to move, to amend the agenda, to move twenty-three oh six thirteen to after we have completed twenty-three oh six fourteen and twenty-three oh six fifteen, because twenty-three oh six fifteen has implications for the tax levy.
All right. Motion's been made. Is there a second? All right. Any discussion? Commissioner Mansfield, are you in the queue to speak to that?
I'm on the main motion, but I'm opposed to do this, to this amendment.
Okay, but you're on the main.
I want to speak to the main motion.
All right. We will vote then. Madam Clerk, if you'll put that on the board. Just to put, to vote on twenty-three oh six first, to switch the fifteen.
Each commissioner record your vote.
This is to switch those two in order. Well, obviously, that fails, so we will not switch those. Commissioner Mansfield.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I want to speak to this motion. I want to make it a move that we adjust the tax levy by moving one penny from General Fund back to Debt Service Fund, and also adjust a Preparation Resolution twenty-three oh six dash nineteen, which moved one penny from the General Fund into the Debt Service Fund, and that's found on page twenty-two of the Capital Projects Other General Government, where that penny is shown of our budget, and I so move.
Motion and a second.
I said, did I not say General Fund? Capital, I meant say General Fund, not the Capital Projects Fund. So I'm moving to take one penny from the General Fund back to the Debt Service Fund, where it came from, so we can focus on our debt issue.
All right. Motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion and a second.
What was the original main motion?
The main motion failed while we were voting on.
So we don't have a main motion right now?
Well, you have Mr. Mansfield's motion.
The main motion is, what was you reading, the fact? Read the fact, that's our motion. I just have a motion.
Wait, wait just a minute. Hey, hold on just a minute.
Pay attention.
All we need to concentrate on is the motion on the floor at this time. The other motion failed, and then Mr. Mansfield made his motion.
Mr. Chairman, even though that motion failed, that means thirteen should be, should be the motion on the floor, because I always, I always had a motion that proves thirteen now. The motion is to amend thirteen, we haven't even had a motion to approve thirteen yet.
All right, Mr. Mansfield, would you like to make a motion to deal with thirteen?
I'll make, well, I'm not going to approve it right now, so I'm not going to make that motion.
All right, twenty-three oh six thirteen is on the floor for the tax levy.
Yeah, there's not been a motion on, Mr. Chairman.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm asking for.
I'll second it.
Wait just a minute. You know, I'm going to say this, and I think that, I'm not going to say it. I think there needs to be a lot more study of things before we get up here and just want to rattle. We're not as intelligent as we sound sometimes, including me. But twenty-three oh six thirteen, do we have a motion for that? Is there a second? Is there a second? All right. That is on the floor. Anyone want to speak to it? Commissioner Shoef? Commissioner Mansfield?
I understand. So I'll restate my amendment for this again. So I'm going to amend this main motion to adjust the tax levy by moving one penny from the General Fund back to the Debt Service Fund. And appropriately, we would need to adjust the Preparation Resolution twenty-three oh six dash nineteen to move one penny from the General Fund into the Debt Service Fund, and that's found on page twenty-two of your Capital, under Capital Projects Other Government is where that penny, that, it's.
Motion's been made, is there a second? Any discussion? Mr. Becker.
I just, I just want to make sure I understand. I understand the motion, but the intent, is the intent of the motion to, that same penny is related to twenty-three oh six fifteen?
Mr. Becker. I mean, Commissioner Mansfield.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
All right, Commissioner Ring.
Yeah, just a clarification. So if, if we vote to do this, then does that mean that if we pass twenty-five three oh six fifteen, that we're moving two pennies? Because that's a separate resolution to move that penny.
What is the intent of your resolution, Commissioner Mansfield?
So my intent is, Mr. Chairman.
One or two.
So my intent is to move the penny from the General Fund back to the Debt Service Fund in the tax rate for that appropriation. And my intent, and I made the motion in budget to remove, remove the appropriation of the six-six-four six-oh-eight and zero cents, which is the worth of a penny right in this year's tax rate. And so basically, I guess I would add to my amendment that we'd also would need to adjust Resolution twenty-three oh six dash fifteen to remove that as well. So you have the appropriation in twenty-three oh six dash nineteen, you have this, which is a resolution to remove that penny in twenty-three oh six fifteen, and you have a resolution in twenty-three oh six thirteen is where the, it begins. And Commissioner Mo Taylor tried every year to move the tax rate before the budget discussions, because obviously you can't, when you pass your budgets before you tax, pass your tax rate, in essence, you are forcing the tax rate because of what you've already passed in the budget. So it was always Commissioner Taylor's spirit of his intent every year to move the tax rate discussion first, so that when you set on that tax rate, then, then you're going to have to start covering out the budget, because if you read on that tax rate, then things don't align in that budget. So that was my intent here, Mr. Chairman. So, so this is my first shot at that amendment of moving the penny from the General Fund over to, back to Debt Service, and also adjusting that in the appropriation resolution. And effectively, that would strike out Resolution twenty-three oh six dash fifteen. In my opinion, I feel like it would nullify that resolution.
I think it would. Does that answer your question, Commissioner Ring, whether you agree or not? Okay.
I'd like to get in queue, I think Mr. Becker's there, but I'd like to get in queue.
Commissioner Becker.
Trying to gather my thoughts from that last conversation there. If this does pass, I would like to still vote on twenty-three oh six fifteen when we get to that point. I just want to make that comment.
I'd just like to make an amendment to this amendment.
I think Commissioner Harrison was in here first.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is this, if this amendment that Commissioner Mansfield has proposed does away with twenty-three oh six fifteen, we've already approved the agenda, would that not require two-thirds vote to adjust the agenda at this juncture?
I, I don't think so, Commissioner Harrison. I'll be glad to consult with the attorney in a moment, but I don't think so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend this. And that is, we actually remove that penny from the tax levy, so we give the citizens a tax break, small one, though it may be. And as part of this, jointly with this amendment, we would move three million dollars from ARPA appropriations coming out of the currently appropriated for Portland water improvements to the Exit Eight project, but with a contingency that that, that those will be held essentially in escrow for one year to allow the City of Hendersonville, which we would not release until the City of Hendersonville brought forward a full packet of financial, a method to show that they had funded along with the state in a breakdown of exactly every, all that will be spent.
Motion and a second on that, and that opened up the water gate. Commissioner Lambert.
Point of clarification, Commissioner Shoef, just want to make sure you're, you're saying move it from Portland Water to Exit Eight. Is that, did I hear that correct?
That's correct. With a, with a, it's a contingency, so it just, it's held. So it's not, it's not getting released. So it's held for one year, and it would go back to Portland if we don't get, ultimately, the City of Hendersonville needs to lead on this, but we're basically giving them a incentive to, to get this done properly.
But if they do get it done properly, then Portland's then out that three million dollars, correct?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure. Thank you.
Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, just to make sure everyone's on the same page of the three million dollar asks there on the ARPA. My budget doesn't have page numbers, so I can't tell you where to look, but on the, under the ARPA funds, there's, there's currently ten million dollars, so ten million dollars currently allocated to other contracted services water line. So that's the, that's the line item that I, my understanding is Commissioner Shoef is addressing. So that ten million dollars would, would it be adjusted to seven million dollars, and the three million dollars balance there would be earmarked for the City of Hendersonville for the Exit Eight that we've been talking about. So just wanted to clarify, it's not taking, it's not taking the hundred percent of the three million dollars. You know, that water line for Portland is, let's, let's be real, that's going to, you know, help develop, you know, put more development in there. We all know that, added water lines. So that's, that ten million dollars, again, just make sure everyone's saying it is already earmarked for the City of Portland for their water lines to do whatever they're going to do developing. So again, just wanted to clarify that. Thanks.
Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I don't, I don't think it's just Portland water lines. I think it was just water projects countywide. Secondly, though, in discussion with the Finance Director, I'm not sure that we legally are going to be able to do that. Might defer to the Finance Director to maybe explain that. It's just a thought. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Law.
If you look on page fourteen of your budget, and I'll explain why I think that's going to create an issue. Yes, there's, there's pages on the letters at the top left corner for the first about nineteen, and then the bottom, all the remaining pages, it's in the bottom middle. If you look at that table. If, if you look at that table, and you start from the, let's just say the right, you see total. The next column going from right to left is revenue replacement and then general. There's, there's different things. General, um, can be things like water lines, um, sewers, broadband, and drainage. The revenue replacement can use, be, used a lot more broadly for things such as this road. The issue, based on the current budget, there's only two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, if you look in the middle column down, five-hundred-and-two dollars available in the revenue replacement. So if you would take three million dollars out of the general and move it over to the revenue replacement, you're gonna be about two-point-seven million dollars over allocated in the revenue replacement. In other words, there's restrictions on the general revenues, uh, that it can be used for water lines. So you're moving one that's very, you know, uh, very un, very restricted funds over into less restricted, if that makes sense. In other words, the water lines are allowed to be used, bu- but the road wouldn't be. It'd have to come out of revenue replacement. The less restricted funds.
Does that answer your question?
Did that make sense, um, Mr. Baker?
No, no. I'm not gonna ask this question, but it does make sense.
Or Mr. Shuff, I was trying to?
Commissioner Mansfield?
Well, I guess, Mr. Chairman, it, it sounds like this is, uh, amendment is not legal. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, you're gonna overallocate into your revenue replacements. You're gonna have to greenwork segments and budget pull it back. So if you, if you do that tonight, you'll probably need to pull things out, such as some of the highway funds or some of the, um, funds for maybe the ambulance replacement or the mains. You'll need to pull the things out of revenue replacement for three million dollars.
Okay, thank you. Um, well, I, I'm all for doing a, giving a penny, uh, off the tax rate back to the taxpayers, so I'm fully supportive of that. I am not supportive of giving the three million dollars to, to Henderson for this exit, and especially, I guess, it's even more cumbersome with this amendment. I couldn't vote for it, even if I wanted to do that, based on what was said. Um... I, I, I'm just gonna say just a couple of things. Um, you know, the, the mayor mentioned the six-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, five-hundred-and-seventeen dollars and sixty-two cents that the City of Henderson owes the county for their portion of the reappraisal process, and it's not just C-TAS that says that. It's also the State Comptroller's Office that says that. And my understanding, state legislature, uh, state legislators agree with this assessment. So it's not a matter of if Henderson is gonna pay this, it's a matter of when they're gonna pay this, I think. And, um, so I don't particularly appreciate kinda being held hostage basically, like, on something that we feel is owed to us as a county based on how we're gonna vote. Um, I, I don't think that's, uh, um, an appropriate way to handle business. In this instance, uh, we've heard it said from the floor that we don't, you know, negotiate with a gun from our head. Um, so I, I don't, I don't like that. But another thing is, is that, um, you know, I, I find that Hendersonville has a, a lack of prioritization on projects, in my opinion, based on their, their budgetary spends. And, um, you know, in the twenty-twenty-two budget, they had one-point-one, one-point-one million dollars for a greenway, uh, two-point-six million dollars for an inline skating rink. Back in eighteen, they spent three million dollars on a park. So a- at six-point-seven million dollars, that has not gone towards infrastructure, such as this exit, since it's so important. It's gone towards, uh, leisure and entertainment. Um, and so, again, that's, that to me shows a lack of priorities as far as a city. When you're saying you don't have the money or you need the money, but then you have money for other things, there's, there's a difference between allocating dollars for wants and allocating a dollar for needs. Um, and I, I think it's great that Hendersonville wants to clean up this, this mess that they're responsible for, and, and I feel that they wholeheartedly should do that on their own initiative. Um, so I, I'm opposed to, um, this for one of those reasons. Um, now, I, I have spoken, um, personally with, uh, about six aldermen to date that were opposed to this in their budget, uh, cycle this year going forward. Um, several of them said that they were opposed to it, uh, for the county as well, and opposed to it at all for Hendersonville, uh, funding this, this project, this exit because of the other needs that they have for infrastructure needs. Um, so that was just something that I, I wanted to point out, just a little bit interesting about that. So I, I can't vote for this amendment as much as I want to for the tax rate, but we've already got two amendments on the main motion, so I can't make another amendment. Uh, but, uh, I, I would be glad to come back and make another amendment, uh, if we can, to remove this penny from the tax rate altogether and give it back to the citizens with no strings attached. Uh, so that would be my ask, but I can't vote for this based on, uh, the appropriation Hendersonville on what the law, law, uh, Finance Director said.
Commissioner, you know?
Thank you. First of all, um, as a commissioner, you have a responsibility to the citizens of the county. And I got a letter in the mail from the mayor of Hendersonville. And I read it, and I, it was nice paper. I thought, wow, this is fancy. So I read it, I read the first part, it was nice. And then I got the second part, and I read it four times. I sat down and I read it, and I studied it. And at first I thought, wow, that's, that's pretty good. However, there's several things in this letter that worried me. One, the city has, the, this project... City fought federal grants for several years based on improvements to safety. The criteria for those grants recently shifted away from safety and toward assistance to impoverished areas. This project is no longer likely to win a competitive federal grant. Then it says Congressman John Bros and Tennessee's two senators are working with the city to secure a deck, a direct appropriation of five million dollars for this project. What if they don't get it? City has spent more than one million on engineering of this project. Currently, the city and the Department of Transportation are in the process of acquiring the property. Whose property? Sec, let me keep going here. Mayor Clary has asked CSX repeatedly to contribute to the construction costs, but they have refused. Have you ever worked with a railroad? Trust me, the railroad will give you the finger, because they will do whatever they wanna do. They're not gonna bend. They're the biggest transportation business in the country. They're not gonna bend. And then it goes on about partnerships between the city and the county. That's great. But you know what? There's a... This county is a big county. We have a lot of cities. We have a lot of cities in the north. We have a lot of people that live up in Portland and Westmoreland, Bethpage, all those areas. Those people aren't rich. Benefits for the entire county. You know what bugged me the most, and this is one of my, the rubber hit the road for me? This project will enable new offices to be built nearby, generating significant property tax for the city and the county. So what happened, in my opinion, is that that road that they built down there along, that runs along Hendersonville with all that businesses that developed. Well, guess what? That was poor planning. Is that my fault? Is that the county's fault? Is that the people in this, the whole area's fault? Westmoreland, Gulletsville, is it their fault? No. So why do we wanna burden the taxpayers for three million dollars to do this project? This is a horrible design that's out there. It's horrible. It can be redone. It needs to be replaced. I'm gonna call out the elephant in the room. The elephant in the room is there is a large piece of property over there called the goat farm. And they wanna develop that goat farm. And trust me, they're probably putting pressure, in my opinion only, okay? So take that into account. So all of us are sitting here going, we don't want all this development. Well, is that what this is about? Is it about fixing an exit? I went down that exit the other night to buy gas. I've been going down that exit for a long time. That's been that way for a long, long time. Why didn't they fix it seven years ago? Why didn't they fix it six years ago? And what happened to all that? Wasn't there six million dollars that's lost in cyberspace they can't find? Where's that money? So why should we be burdened with this? We're hackling over this, and there's no reg- reason to haggle over it. It's either yes or no. Do you wanna spend three million dollars of taxpayers' money to fix something that is not the taxpayers' problem in the county? Hendersonville has an issue. They gotta fix it, but it shouldn't be on our county ta- county taxpayers' backs. I'm not voting for it. I just had to tell you about it. Thanks.
Commissioner Wynn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, if I could, I'd like to offer an amendment to the amendment.
No, you, you, we have two amendments.
Already got two? We can't amend, continue to amend?
No more than two, and we have two on the floor. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm gonna try to be quick on this. This has been fifteen years in the making since I stood side by side with a lot of my neighbors and citizens that are disgusted. I'm all for cutting taxes, but this is not what this is about. This is about holding money hostage. First question, I asked Mayor Clary at the budget meeting, what is the worst-case scenario if we do not fund this project, we meaning the county? He responded, it will happen with or without county money. I've spoken with some aldermen. Those I've spoken with agree, now is not the time to start this project. Reasons, inflation, slowdown in the economy. I've had, seen social media here with Vice Mayor on social media stated, we cannot and should not put this problem on our twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four citizens from a problem in two thousand and eight. He spoke of less expensive options. I haven't heard of them. Have you? Has any of the residents of my district heard of the less expensive options? No. But we all sit by in District Eighteen, people are upset because they've asked for years for infrastructure improvements from their neighborhood out of Alexandria Place, from Crosspoint, maybe to have some sidewalks so they can safely walk to this big shopping center they built years ago. My, my other ki- my conversation with the Vice Mayor, I asked him, do you recall any major accidents due to the current layout of this exit? He responded, no, I don't recall of any. How long would this conversation, again with the Vice Mayor, I said, I won't hold you to a, a timeline, but how long would this take to complete this project? Because some are raising the panic buttons on citizens, saying if we don't do this right away, we're putting everybody in harm's way, cause it's a bad, gonna be a bad accident. Saying this has to be done immediately doesn't make sense, because his response is approximately five years. So if it's gonna take approximately five years, and we're raising the panic buttons that all these bad accidents are gonna happen, then what alternatives has the City of Hendersonville offered to have a safe route while this is being done? During my conversation with the Vice Mayor, he said there were approximately fourteen projects in capital funds needing to be addressed. For example, Stop Thirty Road, people are really livid over there. That road is torn to crap. I, I don't know how else to put it. I'm trying to be nice here, but they're livid. It's a narrow road. They take that back way to Indian Lake to avoid all the traffic from overdevelopment, and not, you know, they feel like they're being ignored. They're not interested in the tunnel. They want their neighborhood roads first addressed. The Walton Ferry alignment, talking about how long of, other Commissioner, how many years have we been hearing about the tunnel? But how many years have we been hearing about the realignment of Walton Ferry Road? Exit Eight was not unforeseen. It was a problem eight years ago when the mayor was elected. For the record, I'm not blaming the current mayor of Hendersonville. It was a problem fifteen years ago. I know of five aldermen against funding this. I promise, Mr. Chairman, I'm almost getting, trying to get through this, but it's been fifteen years of stuff. One more thing about the approximate five-year durate, duration of this project, this mayor will be out of office before the approximate completion, leaving the next mayor to deal with the amount owed on this. Plus, projects of this size often end up coming in over the estimated amount. Look at the courthouse for an example. Who's going to make up the difference? If you're thinking to yourself, the Hendersonville taxpayers, you are correct. We just wrapped up many hours over several meetings, putting together the fiscal year's budget, asking departments to stretch their budgets. For example, I, I laid this out in our budget meeting, the Sheriff's Department requested twenty patrol vehicles. Due to budget constraints, we could offer them ten. COLA increases from departments were about six percent. Many we met halfway. That said, our reasoning for not approving every request to the fullest was simple. We do not have the funds to do so, and we are not raising taxes to do so, because my constituents in District Eighteen endured three property tax increases: twenty-fourteen, twenty-fifteen, and twenty-nineteen. Three property tax. And people are wondering whether twenty-fifteen came in. Well, your aldermen of Hendersonville overwhelmingly approved that property tax in the City of Hendersonville, which is burdening many people today. We have needs in this county that will have to be addressed. EMS. We aren't sitting on a huge pile of reserves like our schools, which I have heard have approximately over one-hundred million dollars in a rainy day fund. This was presented by our Health and Human Ser- Health and Emergency Services Chairman, Garry Rogers, back in February. What is the pulse of the Sumner Station, EMS stations? There's a lot of needs in here. Lot of needs that our men and women are asking for, that I discussed with Commissioner Rogers, that are not expensive asks. You know, we still have citizens' concerns about Exit Eight that have not been addressed after fifteen years. The TIF, where's the missing money? The citizens say perform an audit. They speak of Sumner County providing schools for Hendersonville. Their comment is, this is forced county taxation imposed by cities. These are citizens speaking this. We heard some say this project is for the greater good of the county, that will serve other citizens traveling from other cities in Sumner County. If this is for the greater good, as some have suggested, then why aren't the other cities in Sumner County contributing money to this? Last page, I promise. The developers caused this mess. The city fifteen years ago caused this mess approving the development. The citizens are sick and tired of being government's solution to the problems the government and the city created in the first place. They're not an ATM machine. Their checking account is not an invitation to write checks that we can't, as a government, cash. The citizens should not be responsible for cleaning up this mess. I'm tired of it, and so are my constituents, and so are a lot of other constituents in other districts. Finally, I hope, moving forward, that the developers clean up after the mess they make, rather than burdening our hard-working taxpayers with the cost of cleaning up the mess, cause we're tired of it. I am not going to approve this project, because it's a burden on my district, it's a burden on a lot of y'all's districts. You have other districts in, say, Mr. Wynn's district, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but White House, at some point, I think we're gonna have to address that they need a station there. And again, I'm not putting you on the spot, but I, I think that's a fair assessment for White House, because the last time I drove through there, they're building a lot more homes along Tyree Springs Road. Demand is gonna go up. Hendersonville and, Hendersonville and other cities owe it to the citizens to put infrastructure first. That means before building greenways, inline skating rinks, and bending over backwoods for large retailers like the one on Forrester Treat Road to build here, they need to address the infrastructure first. That said, retail center on Forrester Treat Road is popular with many people. I'll go on record as saying that, but there's a lot of other people that they're upset over that, too, because traveling from point A to point B is getting worse. And I drove past Saundersville Road exit tonight at five-fifteen on the bypass at one of the busiest times of the day. I counted about two or three cars at that exit at the traffic lights. So let's stop falling for the sky is falling mentality, and let's think logically here and vote against this. Thank you.
Commissioner Wright?
We, folks, we are talking about taking money for water lines, for people to have clean drinking water for Exit Eight. We need to pull our... We need to pull our, I started to say something I shouldn't. Need to pull our head out of the sand and start thinking about what's important. There, everybody knows I work for the Sheriff's Office full-time. We have cars that barely run, that we have to go and answer calls, okay? Folks, there's no way in hellies that you will see a yes vote come for this from right here.
Commissioner Teasman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just gotta say, I wonder how many entities in the county would also offer to write a check for our yes vote? And tonight, as much respect as I have for Mayor Clary, it embarrassed me that he said he would write a check tonight if we say yes to this money, and then another check would come on the first of July. My people in District Fourteen, who I represent, are driving on glorified logging roads. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna vote yes on anything. I think that this actually makes this null and void. We should be an overwhelming twenty-three because what's missing against this money? Because we were offered money for our yes vote. Enough said.
Commissioner Sho.
All right, so everybody knows I've been for this, and here's the thing. Like, it's almost not the exit itself. You know, pass fail. Like, I, at the end of the day, I think that four- to five-year timeline is probably right, and the sky's not gonna fall. But you know, you do have to plan ahead for these kind of things. You can't just tunnel in magic of a, an exit out of nowhere. So you kind of, we have to, if you want something done, you have to, if you want something done now, you have to plan for it in the future. Or if you want something done in the future, you have to plan for it and execute on it now. I mean, in medieval times, people would lay the foundation for a church that they know their grandchildren would not see finished. So that's the type of foresight and looking forward to your children's children's children that, you know, I'm trying to do here. But it's not just necessarily about the exit itself. I'm gonna be against any residential growth out in the county. I'm gonna be against limiting growth on the residential side, not so much on the commercial side, but I, I agree with all of these things, because we've seen the effects of it, of bad planning. But like, this idea that because somebody did something bad in the past, that we can't ever do anything to help fix it in the future is a, that's not ownership. We all own this now, whether we, whether we voted for it in the past or not. We own it. We own it. That doesn't mean you're evil if you vote against it, but we own the problem. We own it, even though somebody else made the bad decisions for it. So that's item one. And, and it's really the main point I'm gonna make here. It's not so much about this. I just, I hope people can, we need to pivot away from spending all of our time criticizing the poor decisions of the past, and there are many, and pivot toward doing what we need to do for our children's children's children. So that's really my thought here. I'll give one more comment, and this is similar to another Commissioner's. The city residents or county residents, too. So the difference between an investment in a project like this versus investment in, say, pay is a, is a maintenance of effort type thing. So each step we take up on salary or investment in a particular department forever increases that amount. And so what we took a lot of effort to do with this budget is to not, it's not about a single step, you know, it's not about the soundbite. It's about looking forward toward the trajectory. And this wouldn't, we've got the cushion. I mean, we've got the cushion. We're talking about a penny here. We've got the cushion. We have the ability to do this. It's about, at the end of the day, this is about optics. This is about wanting to look back and say, I'm not gonna do something because somebody else did something bad and I really hate those guys. I've got reams of information. I've, I've spent hours and hours and hours going through documentation, and, and there are some questions about what, how some of this money was handled. I intend to turn it over to the county attorney, and if there are crimes that occurred, then those need to be prosecuted. If there are fines that need to be levied, or there are lawsuits that need to be brought, we need to do those. And if they're not there, we need to stop, you know, making things up, or not making them up, but making things bigger than they are, like stop, you know, because somebody did something eighteen-eighty, doesn't mean we're not gonna build a railroad. So anyway, I'm gonna, I, I feel like I'm gonna have to withdraw my motion because of the conversation I had here with Mr. Lawing, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against the amendment.
Oh, we will hear Commissioner Rogers and then vote on Amendment Two.
I'll withdraw my queue. I was gonna call for a question.
Commissioner Winn. Oh, okay. Second, all, all in favor, say aye. That's overwhelming unless someone demands a vote. All right, we'll put it on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
With a vote of twenty to three, we will call for the question. So the, I'm asking the clerk to place that on the board. Would you, once again, repeat your motion, number, Amendment Two?
Well, no, I withdrew my amendment. I withdrew my amendment. We're on, Mr. Mansfield, because my amendment, we couldn't do after some discussion.
Uh, is there a second to that? Who made the second? All right. So we're on.
And just, just for the record, I withdrew it because of discussion with the finance director.
We're on Amendment One. All right, last. All right, Commissioner Mansfield. Do you remember?
I, I just wanna, I guess, a point of information. Did we just, I thought Amendment Two was still technically, hadn't been withdrawn from the second, or so we just called the question on that Amendment Two.
Yeah, we've not, we've not really been doing anything very technically tonight.
So, well. But I guess my question is, has the question been called then to my amendment, or is it still?
No, it's, your amendment is a, no.
It's okay.
If you want, we won't need to repeat.
Okay, it's free and clear. That's, all right. So my amendment was to adjust the tax levy by moving one penny from general fund back to the debt service fund. And accordingly, we would need to adjust the appropriation resolution twenty-three oh six dash nineteen to also move one penny from the general fund back into the debt service fund. And again, where I was identifying that was on page twenty-two of the budget. But I did want to make an amendment to my amendment, now that I can. I wanna, I, I guess, I would like to reduce the tax rate by one penny. And to give that money dedicated back to the taxpayers.
All right, Amendment Two, to reduce the tax rate by one penny.
From the, it's from the general fund on where that item was appropriated. So that's where it would need to come from still, according to the financial structure.
Is there a second? All right. We have a second. Commissioner Winn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like this amendment to give the penny back. My concern lies with, there are still so many needs within the county that we're saying no to, and the, the tax rate's essentially already there. I do have concerns that, you know, we, I feel we're sitting on a ticking time bomb when it comes to county employee compensation. I think we're way behind the eight ball on that. I know we're addressing it a little bit this year, but I think we've got a long way to go there. There's, there's a lot of other things, such as just the patrol cars or the sheriffs that we could utilize some of this funding for. And again, I, I'm not opposed to giving money back, but I just see that there is such a need for county services and departments that, that this funding can go towards to help. So I, I think it would be best to leave it in the general fund. And honestly, I think by pulling it out, we're actually setting ourselves up for another tax increase in, in two to three years. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have one more in the queue, then we'll vote. Commissioner Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I'm, I'm in agreement with this amendment, and I'm also in agreement with the statement that Commissioner Winn just made. We are behind the eight ball when it comes to compensation for our employees. Three percent is not enough. I don't think there's anybody in this room that would disagree with that, that's, that's paying attention. I mean, even if we give them three percent, they're still seven or eight percent behind because of inflation. That being said, having been privy to a lot of the budget hearings and whatnot, we do know that there is some daylight coming next year. If you can just hold on and bear with us, I do believe that there is some, some daylight in the very foreseeable future. So with that said, I do support this, this amendment. Thank you.
Commissioner Schmidt.
One thing I just wanna quickly mention that I failed to mention before is, you know, you know, during our first ten months, we had to plan for some unforeseen circumstances in the budget. And do, you know, being careful and using caution on how we spend money is great, because the two unforeseen circumstances that I'm gonna list as an example was the residential neighborhood in the hollows, where the homeowner, homeowners had a lot of flooding. That was unforeseen. We didn't see that coming. Thank God we were prepared, you know, fiscally for that. The second one, as an example, a high-profile murder trial here in Sumner County that required extra security, how, you know, hotels, et cetera, for that going on. You know, that's kind of why, you know, you know, we're treading carefully when we spend the money and how we allocate it right now, because, you know, we wanna be prepared for next year if something unforeseen happens. But I'm all for, you know, giving increases to our employees. They deserve it. It's just, I want to use some caution on how we are approaching these things through our budgets, just in case, you know, something unforeseen again should pop up. Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Mansfield's amendment is on the board to move a penny back. I'll ask the clerk to put that on the board. By a penny, yeah.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Okay, nearly unanimous, all right. Twenty-two to one. Okay, I guess we are back on twenty-three oh six thirteen. Any, any motion on that? Commissioner Sho.
Yeah, so twenty-three oh six fourteen, oh, sorry. Yes, we do, we need to vote on the main. That's correct, fixing the tax levy, the tax levy, because we just had the amendment. So moved.
All right, motion's been made in second. I'll ask the clerk to put that on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
That is a unanimous vote, twenty-three to zero. All right.
So twenty-three oh six fourteen is removing a hundred thousand dollars to Ford Sumner FY twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four general fund.
All right, are you, you wanna make a motion on?
So moved.
All right, motion and a second.
And I'd like to get in queue on this one.
All right, Commissioner Mansfield's in, in the queue first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that you, Mr. Chairman, summarized, in my opinion, the sentiments of a majority of Sumner County residents a few years ago regarding outside lobbyist groups like Ford Sumner, when you're expressing your opinions on the floor regarding the GNRC, which Ford Sumner is a part of advancing their development goals and growth goals for what they've determined as the, us being the North Shore of Nashville. I did wanna quote you a little bit on that, because I felt it relevant to, in my opinion, the spirit of what Ford Sumner is as a part of that greater effort. You, you had made the argument against us funding the GNRC, that you, as a former resident in Nashville, if you agreed with the things they do in Nashville, you would be living in Nashville. And you didn't wanna be associated with anything that even had the name Nashville. Nashville Regional Council means us, Sumner County, they claim us, is kind of what your sentiment was. It didn't mean Nashville. And so you felt that, that the GNRC at that time was reaching their tentacles out to benefit Nashville and basically just opening us up to benefit Nashville. So, and you brought up a good point, that even the residents of Nashville voted against the rapid rail system at the time, and Ford Sumner is a part of the, the net corridor that is bringing in mass transit through buses in the Sumner County with a goal of going all the way up to Westmoreland. And all this does, and we've talked about the negative effects of growth and development that I've heard here tonight, is that this definitely opens a door for that type of mass development and growth, that a lot of people, and I, I know that Commissioner Moss is in Commissioner Wright's district, are not wanting to see happen necessarily, and that I know has negatively affected their constituents in Mo's old district. And so, but even Nashville rejected mass transit. And so, you know, you had made a comment, we're talking about growth and developing like we can't control it, but you, you made a good statement, says we're the creators of growth, meaning we elected officials because of approving rezonings, approving developments. And you, you cautioned us to stop and think that we didn't need people from Nashville opening up Sumner County with plans of growth until we got our own hands around our own infrastructure, which is kind of what we're debating tonight. One of the concerns that taxpayers have come to me with regarding Ford Sumner, and reminded me of, was their support of the, the former county executive Holt's proposed twenty-million-dollar industrial park that many of you may not be familiar with, and it's on what's called the Meadows now, and that I, we voted, I voted against that as well. But when, when they were a part of this push for this twenty-million-dollar industrial park, there was a presence of vacant manufacturing space in Gallatin with another industrial park that was not brought into question. So I question the motives of this group as far as, as promoting, whose growth are they promoting? I, I don't feel like it's growth that's beneficial to us. I feel like it's growth that's beneficial to Nashville. One thing that Ford Sumner, a citizen brought to my attention, was that it boasted about bringing Beretta to Sumner County. But in, in an industrial development board meeting, it was revealed that Beretta didn't hire as many people as they claimed and didn't meet their promised wage rates. And so things that beating on the chest as a win really aren't wins for the people, as has been sold to us. And taxpayers have relayed to me, they feel that as an unelected bureaucracy and board, that using citizens' tax dollars for this has worsened issues related to growth and development instead of resolving them. And so what, I wanted to give a little bit of history about the funding for Ford Sumner. It, it came from the hospital fund, and last year, the Sumner County Commission voted to drain it by nine million dollars. And so what was funding this hundred thousand dollars was the interest of that nine million. Well, that doesn't exist anymore. So we lost that last year, the funding source for this item on the budget, which is one reason why I am a proponent of pulling that out of the budget, is because we lost that funding source. Little history of the hospital fund, basically, it's what people know as Sumner Regional Hospital. It's first sold, the county owned it, and they sold it in two thousand and four, and then is also sold in two thousand and ten out of a bankruptcy. So in total, the county garnered like twenty-five million dollars from this sale twice. And now it's down to, thankfully, around seven hundred thousand or And now it's down to thankfully around $700,000 in this budget because they've given money back from the Comer Barn and the matching grant and things like that. But we have lost a major source of savings in what's funneling this. So, you know, with this resolution of removing this appropriation, you know, I, I also wanted to make sure, I'm, I'm going to so move to accept this, but I wanted to make sure that we strike $100,000 from Ford Sumner from the nonprofit, profit charitable contributions resolution, which is 2306-20, because this would need to fix that resolution as well. So I'm making that as part of my amendment to do this, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Becker.
Oh, I was in queue, Mr. Chairman.
Looks like, whatever he says.
I don't, I don't see you in the queue, Commissioner Shoef. If you will wait just a moment.
No problem.
Commissioner Becker.
Okay. Just a couple of quick things. You know, the hospital fund, as, as was just talked about, got drained last year. Just, just for more education, that was, you know, that $9 million went to the city of Gallatin for infrastructure around 109. So sort of tying back in with what we talked about Exit Eight in Hendersonville, we, you know, that's exactly where all $9 million of that went last year was to the, the city of Gallatin for, for their, for their road problems. That's just a side note. What I'd like to do is make an amendment here. And I don't know verbiage, but let me, let me mention my intent and then we'll see what it, what it might need to be. Instead of $100,000, I would, I would like for us to, instead of appropriating $100,000, to appropriate $10,000 and have a, a member of the county commission designated by the chairman sit on their board. Again, so the intent is instead of $100,000, it would be $10,000 and have a member of the commission determined by the chairman of the commission is, is who that, who that member would be. The, the reason I don't want to go to zero is, you know, Ford Sumner's as a, as an organization, they're not, they're not going to go anywhere. Like this, we're not, this isn't defunding that group, right? And so to me, if we, if we go to zero, we're effectively just removing ourselves from any type of decision-making or influence to, to Ford Sumner as an organization. So to me, I think would benefit us to have a seat on their board. And, and again, changes appropriation to $10,000. So that is my intent. And I don't know wording here, what it would need to be, but I guess I'll just make, my amendment is to change it to $10,000 appropriation and with one seat on their board as determined by the chairman of the county commission.
All right, you've heard the amendment. Please let me know if you're speaking to the amendment, Commissioner Brown. I'll second it, and I'd like to get in queue. Commissioner Brown, is that to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
What he said and... Whenever this came up, you know, I, I'm not for any lobbying in the county, period. We do not need that kind of money here influencing decisions being made. So whenever we were talking about this, Commissioner Klein looked up, saw how many people were on the board, and there were 20. So I made the proposal that we, for, for the $100,000, that we would get half of their board. They never came back. They did not redress that response at all. And so I don't think that they're, they're willing to have us speaking as citizens on their board. That one commission is going to get outvoted every time. That, that, that right there is just not a, a solution that I see viable as far as a lobbying group such as Ford Sumner is concerned. Yes, they, they've got about, I think, I think it's $556,000, somewhere in there as far as their budget. And we were just about a twentieth of that. So I just, I do not see that this is a solution as far as the amendment that Commissioner Becker proposed since it's already been proposed to Mr. Johnston. And he did not go for it at that time at the $400,000. Thank you.
Is this on the amendment, Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
I don't see him in the queue. Oh, Commissioner, pardon me, Commissioner Rogers. Commissioner Ring.
On the, on the main motion. On the main motion.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Rogers.
Yes, sir. So I guess I have a question here, and I don't, I'm not sure how or where it should go. So the commissioner made the remark that if we give $10,000, or if we, if we didn't give anything, we would lose our, our voice or our seat there. I guess my question would be, is the mayor intended to come off of Ford Sumner? Or if we don't give this money, is this another? I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Commissioner Rogers. We don't, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I was just wanting to make sure we had order. But I was, I was, I was confused unless the mayor's giving up his spot. Then I think we would have, still have something there. But however, this, that the commissioner spoke of earlier cost the county about $10 million, if I remember correctly, for an overpass or some kind of ramp or something that's going to tie, I think, Long Holo Pike, Red River, up into 109 going across Cornfield that we have here in this county right outside of our door here. I, I can't support that. Whether it's, we have 24 voices on this board, or we have three or just one as our county mayor, costing $10 million of the county's revenue plus another $100,000, I don't think that's fair at all. So I can't support it either way we go.
Commissioner Miller, is this on the amendment?
I'm kind of piggybacking on Commissioner Brown. I don't know that they would, even if, if we did agree to give them $10,000, would they even agree to give us a seat? And I don't think one seat's going to be effective. That's all. So I won't support the amendment.
Commissioner Shoef, is this on the amendment?
It is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, I, I mean, look, I'm, I came here prepared to, to vote, to strike this entirely. But a wise person told me, very early on after winning an election, that when you win something, you go in and you take things over as best you can. So you can, there are a lot of things that feel good, and it feels good to be able to say, yeah, we're kicking these guys to the curb. But you're not. Like, they're going to, $100,000, Meta can just do like that. I mean, Mark Zuckerberg and, and Elon Musk are about to go have an MMA fight, and they'll take their extra winnings from that and throw that over and, and make that $100,000 up easy. So I, I don't disagree that I, that it's, it doesn't, it's not, it doesn't feel good to have somebody, an unelected body within your midst. But these things exist. And there's, you know, I don't think we can have a resolution to just evict Ford Sumner. So you have to, you have to kind of think how you're going to deal with this. We can take our ball and go home, and I'm fine with doing that too, honestly. Not the end of the world. But $10,000 a year is not a lot of money to keep your eye on and your thumb on as, even in a small way, a lot of really big players. So I just, similar to the Exit Eight thing, I, I hope we get toward, as we're in this now, doing things that, that are impactful as opposed to just what feels good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Teichner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you so much. And I respect the, the idea of having a say-so, but there's 20 folks on Ford Sumner. And unless we vote to put 11 of us in the, I mean, there's no voice. And as much as I respect my fellow commissioner, and I know that he agrees with this, whenever that we won, then I know I ran because the only way I won was because the people took over. And with me, like, I, I'm truly a representative of them. I'm not trying to lead them. I'm trying to be led by the voice of the people. And so I think that we have to just do whatever we can to, it's still the people's money. And I've not had one conversation that said, "Please keep Ford Sumner." So, I mean, we can't, I mean, I, I wish we had a say-so, but do we have a say-so now? No. Do we have a say-so then? No, we just take $10,000 from the people and put one of us on there to just have to sit through another long meeting. It just seems redundant. And so I have to vote against anything to Ford Sumner money, getting, getting any money from Ford, to Ford Sumner. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Junau.
Thank you. A while back, myself and another commissioner, and Mr. Shoef was there, we went to a Ford Sumner program at Ball State. And several of the questions that I asked Ford Sumner was, "What are your benchmarks? What have you brought forward? What are you doing?" So we're talking about simulators and doing things for the schools and much of what the schools are already doing. And so my question to them was, "Can you tell me what you're doing with this money? What are you benchmarking it against?" And I think that we had already asked them that anyway, to bring forward benchmarks, what have you been doing with the money? And I haven't seen any benchmarks. I haven't seen any performance programs. They haven't presented any of that. So what is the $100,000 going to be used for? That's not even clear. So why would you give $100,000 to a, not, an NGO, which is what they are, and not know what they're going to use it for? And not have any benchmarks and not have any parameters or guideposts or guardrails? I don't, I think it's... This business of spending money like it's just candy in a cookie jar, there's one word I have for it. It's called proliferate. You know what proliferate means? It means wasteful spending. So if we're going to proliferate all the time, well, guess what? Remember what Martha Thatcher said? You're going pretty soon run out of everybody else's money. So my point is, I don't think this is a wise idea to give money to an NGO that's not giving you any information. They don't want you on their board, and they don't give you any parameters or benchmarks of what they're doing. It's a bad idea, and I don't think it's right to take it off the taxpayer's bill or put it on their bill. Thank you.
Commissioner Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to remind all my colleagues here that we do have one access to Ford Sumner. He's called the mayor of the county. And he could represent us and let us know what they're doing. I'm still at a loss to understand where they derive their power from and how they're able to do all of the things they're doing in the county. And I would like to know that as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Wynn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, I'm just, as I'm sitting here listening to all the remarks and the concern over like, one seat's not enough. You can't do anything with one seat. And then I look around at this room and see there's 24 different seats. And essentially, we're saying that our individual seats are worth nothing because our singular voices don't matter. That's not true. It's not true at all. One seat can make a difference, you know? There's an old saying out there, "If you're not at the table, you're on the table." I, I think one seat's better than no seat. You know, so I, I would like to see continuation to some, to some number. I don't know what the right number is, but I know the wrong one's zero. So, you know, $10,000 to, to maintain a relationship with Ford Sumner contingent upon a seat that gets a seat at the table, allows us to exert some sort of influence, just as each and every one of us do in this room every month, whether it be committee or in this main chamber. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to kind of piggyback off of Commissioner Wynn's remarks. You know, John Adams in the Continental Congress was a lone voice, trying to raise an army. And he battled, and he battled, and he battled until he persuaded. If, if you're only going in, you got to have the deck stacked to ensure a win, then there's no value in the argument in trying to make the point, trying to persuade 23 other voices in the room. So I do think there is a value in the one seat. I will support this. I'm kind of like Commissioner Shoef. I mean, if we don't, if we don't give anything, they're not going away. But at least this still gives us a seat at the table and gives us an opportunity. I think that's kind of all we're asking. Thank you.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Commissioner Klein's point, we do have a board member sitting here amongst us. If it be the will of the body, we could suspend the rules and ask him that question, what they do do for us. And if he would like to answer that question, that may help us make up our mind right now. Could we vote on suspending the rules?
I'm going to, I'm going to suggest that we just carry on with the debate among ourselves rather than discussing it with, on that level. Commissioner Brown.
Call question.
All right. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
All right, put it on the board. The ayes have it, and we will vote immediately on this amendment. Let, place that on the board. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, can you repeat the amendment, please?
No, I can't. Whose amendment was it? You explained fully what you meant. I think it was basically that we would contribute $10,000 and have one seat on the board. But there's not a guarantee that we'll have one seat. They'd have to agree to that. Is that pretty much what it was, Commissioner? To maintain a relationship?
Correct. Yeah, you know, previously, as was talked about, you know, the, the $100,000 was contingent on 20 board members. Okay, so $100,000 that's in there is contingent on adding 20 board members. Yes, it was. I promise you, it was. 50%. So you got 20, and you got, add another 20, so that's 20 of 40. Regardless, it was adding 20 board members. So the, the amendment here is $10,000 with one board member. It's been mentioned that the county mayor is on the board. I'll go and tell you, I, it sounds to me that a lot of commissioners in here may disagree with the county mayor at certain times on certain things. So to me, adding this board member that's designated by the chairman of the commission would be greatly beneficial. And $10,000 is a, I mean, it's, it's a nominal amount to, for us to maintain presence and, and continue to have a voice with them. So that's, that's the amendment.
We, we've heard the explanation. Okay, so...
What, what is that contingent with the...
Yes, it's contingent. So if they don't give us a board seat, we don't give them $10,000.
All right, place it on the board.
Each commissioner record your vote.
All right, that motion fails 13 to 10. All right, we're back to the original motion. Commissioner Ring.
Yes, sir. What somebody may or may not understand is that basically Forward Sumner operates as an, our economic community, our economic development board. We don't have an economic development director in Sumner County. If somebody from, say, a large corporation is interested in coming to Sumner County to build a factory, or to build anything, any kind of commercial enterprise, but they're not interested in putting it in the city limits necessarily, they have nobody to talk to except Forward Sumner. So, even if they want to put in the city limits, Forward Sumner acts in that capacity as well. So, I think that whatever we give them, up to $100,000, is a lot better off than us setting up an office of community economic development. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Just a question. If we do not fund Forward Sumner at all, does the county mayor maintain a seat on their board?
That's not our prerogative.
Well, the reason I ask that question is, it's been put forward by a couple of commissioners that we would have a presence. That's why I ask the question.
Yeah, I understand that, but that's not out of our ballpark. Commissioner Klein.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, probably all of us received this morning an email from Mr. Johnston of Sumner, Forward Sumner. And I'm going to cut to the chase of his point. He said, "Together, we have $1.3 billion in T-dot road projects for Sumner County, either under construction or planned for construction over the next five years. Humbly, I suggest this is not the time for the county government to leave the table. Rather, it is critical that the county commission stay connected and help lead this discussion and help set the priorities for the infrastructure projects." I wrote an email back to him, and I thought it would be better if I read it tonight. It will not be long, but I said, "Mr. Johnston, I appreciate the fact that you have access to considerable money. I also appreciate that you are very aggressive in making it work for the county. Unfortunately, you fail to see that we commissioners, as the voice of the citizens, have no seat at the table now. I thought our offer to your organization that Commissioner Brown brought forward was a fair one. You didn't even come back with a counteroffer. Clearly, you don't want the opinion of the citizens, nor their representatives. I'm told you pretty much work with and answer to the mayor's, city, and county. The people of this county are very concerned about the out-of-control growth we have experienced in recent years, that that creates, and the deficiencies ultimately created in the infrastructure. I know you would tell me that's what you're trying to fix, but I would respond back that by widening 386, as well as all of the other major projects you're involved in, all you are doing is setting the stage for more out-of-control growth. The mayors who deal with the day-to-day problems of their particular jurisdictions tend to concern themselves with the problems that already exist. Commissioners should concern themselves with the planning of their jurisdictions, as they have to come up with the money to pay for the infrastructure that is created by the growth. Looking ahead is essential to the duties of the county commission. In my observation, that part of the job has been ignored or abandoned by the recent commissions. I knocked on over 1,000 doors and had at least 650 conversations when I ran for office last year. The people of District 6 made it very clear that they were not interested in an eight-lane freeway with a bus lane coming from Nashville called 386. They don't want to see 31E become a freeway all the way past Westmoreland that will turn their rural farmland into a part of a megalopolis that will be known as Greater Nashville. I was the builder, the son of a builder in Southern California from the '60s through the '90s. I know something about out-of-control growth versus controlled growth and balancing an economy and ecosystem as it relates to agriculture, residential, industrial, and commercial. From what I've seen in the 24 years that I've lived in Sumner County, none of the organizations, yours and the GNRC, are all that concerned with that fragile balance. So, if you'd like to give the people a voice in what you're doing, I'd be happy to talk to you about it. Until that happens, I can't in good conscience support Forward Sumner or what they're doing. Thank you.
All right. Out of curiosity, would you please show your hand if you received that email? Okay. I don't think I did, but anyway, this next vote that's on the board is to Mr. Mansfield's, which basically is cutting relationship with Forward Sumner. Put that on the board, Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner, record your votes.
All right, the vote was 15 to 7 to not continue a relationship with Forward Sumner. Oh, without objection. Oh, okay. As the clerk will take note of that. We're going to take, without objection, we're going to take 15 minutes.
Mr. Sho, you want to?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is approving fees relevant to the Planning and Development, yeah, Planning and Development Board and the, or excuse me, Planning and Development Department. And the purpose of this, just a little bit of background, was that we asked each of the departments, and all the departments really but one, really were very, very helpful in working with us through benchmarking. And we found, in some cases, Mr. South's department was well behind market, so we moved to increase here. So I so move.
All right, motion and a second. Commissioner Mansfield.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I understand the spirit of this, but I just wanted to clarify. I voted against this in budget, and I understand why it's being asked. But it feels like this is again another problem of the byproduct of growth, whereas the cities have exacerbated the problems or caused the problems of the growth without a way to pay for it, since the county is not relieved of the County Powers Relief Act. So yet, we're going to want to come to county residents specifically and say, "Well, the cities have been naughty, so we're going to make you pay in the county." I just have a problem with that, just on a general principle, so I can't support this. I mean, I'm not trying to shame anybody who does, but it just, for me, it's just from that perspective of, "I just can't support this fee increase because of, we're lacking from things because of the city's growth, but yet we want to charge county residents for it," and that's just...
Commissioner Beck, sir.
I just want to make a comment to 100% of constituents that I represent, besides the schools, their property tag, county property taxes are increased for other areas of the county. So 100%, so I'm vote, you know, if I was to vote exactly the way my constituents, I would vote no on everything we've, everything that comes across our agenda, except, you know, minus the schools, right? And so, you know, you hear the comments that were the similar and exactly like, you know, was just made. I think we need to get beyond that, because that's not how we operate, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, sir. Having sat through the budget hearings, also, one of the ways that we were able to try to increase the pay for our, for Josh and for Marshall and for the other individual in that office, and their name escapes me right now, was through the increase in these fees. So if we don't increase the fees, then we're going to have to take a look at their salary. And they were grossly underpaid when you looked at the surrounding counties. So I would just ask you to consider that when you're voting. Thank you.
Mr. Mansfield.
Respectfully, Mr. Chairman, I have to disagree with that statement. The money that was increased funding for salaries in the Planning Department was because of positions eliminated and moved and shifted around, irregardless of this fund increase proposal. So that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Kline.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to disagree with my colleague Jeremy Mansfield. I, the reason I am for this program is specifically because we cannot get around the 2006 County Powers Relief Act. This is a way to increase fees and do it legally, and so I'm totally in favor of it. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, place that on the board, please.
Each commissioner record your vote.
Okay. Eighteen to five. All right, that does pass. Commissioner?
So this is a 36-month agreement with Comcast Business Communications. This is upgrades to our internet services, and I really appreciated the ITG directors, interim ITG directors' analysis of this. In the long term, my understanding is that this is actually going to save money, so I so move.
All right, motion and a second. Seeing no one in the board, all in favor, signify the saying a. Post lights sent.
I don't know if we know who that second was. So this is accepting the employment agreement for the Summer County Finance Director, so a little bit of background on this one. The, I really appreciate the Finance Director here, so he had negotiated a really strong agreement, and because of some of the resetting we were doing post some of the benchmarking, it came to our attention, and our Finance Director volunteered this, that it caused an automatic trigger in his, his contract that would have set his salary equivalent to the highest of anybody else within the county. So we, that was out of line, and we got back, and the chairman negotiated a, negotiated this down to set a cap on it. So I so move.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions here. What was the average pay increase for our county employees?
Commissioner.
The average incre, I mean, it's hard to take an average. You'd have to get a weighted average to do that. So we'd have to take some math that I... Between, got a, got 3%. The folks who had had, had had ARPA, had had ARPA basically used to supplement their salaries, we kept that, and so you can make an argument on two cases there that they got a 2% cost of living effectively from what they're seeing, but we're also baking in, you know, 6% to 7% of that. So, you know, you could consider that nine. Depending on how you want to look at it. From the point of view of our folks gardeners right now, they probably wouldn't look at that as a, as a nine. They would look at it as a two. And then the Planning Department, because they were just so far out of market, about 15%, I think. Fifteen to 20. Well, it was, they were, they were different levels, so we could say 20, but it was considerable amount. That's, that's the best answer I can give you without, you know, giving you a weighted average, which I don't think we want to do.
No, I appreciate that. So, I mean, I, I'd always heard three. It's kind of what was been thrown around. Let's go with three. Is that fair?
That's fair enough.
Okay. Do we know what the average pay increase was for our county department heads specifically? Just the department heads?
I don't. Well, the electors are four, because some are four to five. Yeah, but some of that, some of that's by state statute, which we can't, we have no authority over.
Yeah, so first I will say this, you know, I think Mr. Long does an exceptional job, and he's worth every penny that we're going to pay him, you know, so... But when I look at this contract and I look at the amount of increase, it's an eight-and-a-half percent raise built in, unless my math is wrong, which is essentially double what anybody else got in the county. And then there's also language in there, and I'll say kudos too to Mr. Long for negotiating the contract. But some of the language in there, salary increase equal to greater of any percentage or dollar increase provided to any county employee. So is that the, a percentage, and I know it's a cap at nine-and-a-half percent. Is that just a percentage or the dollar amount? Is it the, which one's higher? Is that the one we go with?
So I, was that directed, was that question directed at me?
I'll direct it to anybody who can answer it.
Going on here, I feel like we're outside of the boundaries of the, you know, or is this supposed to be going back and forth?
I'll direct it to Mr. Hyde, and he can direct it wherever.
Just a moment. I think, I think that he's asking a question, and, you know, if you can answer it, but we, this is not, we need to be careful that it doesn't become a debating society here. I, I think what we need to remember with people who have degrees and expertise like our attorneys, our law director, and other people, they're not going to make what other people. I would never assume that I would make what these kind of people would make or anyone else. And it's just a matter of opinion. But go ahead. What, what do you want to ask?
So in the language, are we going with, is it the higher of the percent of any employee or the total? Just clarification on that language.
It was a percent.
So say if we've got a janitor that, that we see is woefully underpaid, and we're going to give him a nine-and-a-half percent raise, and Mr. Long automatically gets a nine-and-a-half percent raise?
That's the, I mean, that's the way it's written, yes.
All right, that's concerning to me, just because, you know, someone who may make at, at a lower end of a pay scale, a nine-and-a-half percent of like $30,000 or $50,000 is a lot different than someone who's, who's getting paid, you know, $150-plus thousand dollars a year, a nine-and-a-half percent. So that's, that's concerning. Also, too, this, the language of any employee, I think we need to have an apples-to-apples here. And really, it should be of any department head. So I would like to make that amendment, a motion to make that amendment to this, and just to insert that or change that language from any county employee to county department head.
All right. So motion and a second. Now, Commissioner Becker, are you wanting to speak on this amendment?
Not, not on specific amendment.
All right.
I just want, I think the point of information here, probably relevant, is that Law Director, excuse me, the Finance Director, sorry, just stated he, you know, this is a two-way negotiation here, so he just stated he wouldn't take that, so take that for what it's worth. He would not agree to those terms on the fly, so. Right. This contract that was written now is far stricter than the one that was previously in place. Far stricter.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, but we're here, it's open, so if we're going to make changes, now's the time to do it. And just because it was done in the past, we don't need to just keep riding it out.
Place it on the board, Madam Clerk. Amendment.
The amendment is, can you restate the amendment? Or, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I overstepped.
Yeah, I'll restate the amendment. So in the contract, it says it's the verbiage of any employee, so it's, so the language of salary increase equal to the greater of any percentage or dollar increase provided to any county employee. I'd like to change that any county employee to county department head.
All right. Okay. All right, if you would. Okay, that was pretty resoundingly defeated, 17 to six, so we're back to this, this main motion agreeing to contract with the Finance Director. Commissioner Becker.
Mr. Chairman, I wasn't through.
Yeah, what, actually, we voted.
I understand that, but I've got the floor, and I haven't...
You don't have the floor after a vote. I mean, we voted, so it's open again. If you'll go in the queue, then you can start all over. Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, I'm, just a quick comment here, just to clarify. I mean, right now, the current contract, there's no cap. Okay, so it was Mr. Long who actually brought it to our attention, and he was like, "Hey, you all are about to contractually give me a 20% raise." So it was his idea to bring it back, and so I just wanted to make sure that if there were any questions, that, that the current contract, there's no cap, this, this version of it that Mr. Long and Mr. Hyde sat down and agreed upon provides that cap, so thanks.
All right, place that on the board, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chairman.
Are you in the queue?
I thought I was. My mic's on.
Go ahead.
And I realize this again, if this is all based off of the, the current contract, but it just, you know, this is the first time that I'm seeing it, the employment contract of our Finance Director, so I just have questions. So there's language in there that the Finance Director reports to the County Commission, but it's my understanding, and it was something that I believe was covered through our CTAS training, uh, that the Commission doesn't have any employees, and so, uh, I, I don't know why we would have a contract saying that there's an employee reporting to us whenever legally we, we don't have employees. Um, so that's one thing I think that we need to address, uh, and just correct, um, and, and point that to, uh, essentially, I think the County Mayor's is probably the, the more appropriate place for that to reside. Uh, according to the T C A five dash six dash, uh, zero six, uh, so the mayor does appoint the, the department heads, uh, with confirmation from the legislative body, uh, but also within that T C A, uh, the mayor shall be the chief executive officer of the county and shall, uh, have all the powers and duties formerly exercised by the county judge, county chair, elected officials exercising general supervision of the county government, uh, as provided by this chapter. Uh, so I, I just feel like that, that one language needs to change, so I'd like to, to make a motion to amend and just, uh, substitute County Commission for County Mayor.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I'll take my point, um, that motion's out of order simply for the fact that we operate pursuant to a private act for both the Finance Director and the Law Director, um, so therefore, we'd have to change a private act to do that, and that motion's out of order.
And I agree with you. Anything else? All right, uh, Commissioner Teichner.
Call question.
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Post lights sent. Okay, put it on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Twenty to three. All right, uh, we'll place the, uh, motion on the board.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
You're voting on the contract now. All right, twenty-one to zero. Where there's some people, uh, that wanted to vote, that did not. Yeah, unanimous. All right, Commissioner Shu.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, twenty-three oh six nineteen, um, I'd like to note here that per our rules, um, we need to sever this. So we need to, I think at a minimum, sever this into schools and County General. So, um, I think this will need a, a two-thirds vote, but I would like to, um, well, we, I'd, I'd like to say, I, we need to have two separate votes here.
Second.
So, so I'd like to make a mo- a motion to make two separate votes, one for the schools and one for the County General.
All right, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Post lights sent, all right, go ahead.
Uh, so we'll go with the schools first, um, I'd like to, uh, move that we approve the school's budget, and just note that this budget is a maintenance of effort budget, um, after just kind of reviewing, uh, the, the school's finances and talking with, with folks from both the school board and the, uh, Director of Schools, that, uh, we, we determined that a, a maintenance of effort budget, uh, given that the additional state funding that they had, uh, is more than sufficient, and, uh, we, this is a, a vote that is basically required by law.
Second.
Motion and a second, uh, Commissioner Teichner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just due to my wife's nature of being a public school, uh, the school, and, uh, also, um, just from conversations with many of my constituents, you know, stating their preference that I abstain from these type of votes, I'm, I'm gonna be abstaining.
All right, okay, uh, I think that would be wise, put that on the board, Madam Clerk. Um, yeah, go ahead and put it on the board. Mm-hmm, yes.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
All right, that passes, uh, fourteen to eight. Go ahead, Commissioner Shu.
Uh, yeah, so the rest is just the County General, which includes, uh, all other operations, uh, and incorporates the amendments that we have, have earlier voted on.
Okay, the motion and a second, Commissioner Wright.
Since this next vote will be, part of it will be the Sheriff's Office budget, I will be abstaining from this vote for the first time in over four years, that I have had the opportunity to not have to vote against my own budget. So I thank y'all.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, there's some language in twenty-three oh six dash nineteen, it's concerning the courthouse security litigation tax being first appropriated, uh, to the courthouse security officer's salary and related benefits. Um, and I, I believe this might be in opposition to the nineteen eighty-one private act. Um, so I asked the question, are we referring to, is it the litigation tax that funds the courthouse and the jail maintenance fund? Is that what we're referring to when, when we're saying the courthouse security litigation taxes?
Is that correct, Mr. Long?
Noted on the budget in the letter, but when I talked to Eric, we thought it's probably best to note all those in your appropriation resolution to make sure they're absolutely clear, but it's been that way for several years.
Okay, yeah, I saw that, and, and just knowing what that tax was used for, and the way that that act reads, it, it would first have to go to the county maintenance, uh, so just had that question, but, uh, I support that being there, just wanted to make sure that we were in line.
Okay, Commissioner Becker.
Thanks, sir, um, the, the table of contents says it's on page thirty, so there's a personnel office on page thirty, if you can find page thirty. Uh, what's currently listed in the budget is the line item for the Human Resources Director. The line, um, the funding shifts January one, uh, from the H R Director line item to, uh, H R Services Consultants', uh, fee line item. And so I'd like to make an amen- an amendment, instead of January first, it will be July first of twenty twenty-three, to make that shift.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I was a little surprised, I, during the budget hearings, um, this was, uh, discussed about just removing, um, and moving the liability claims worker, workers' comp function and employee back into the Law Director and moving the hiring function back under the Finance Director where it was previously. I wasn't here, I was unfortunately out of town when the budget, the joint budget meeting was two weeks ago, but I, I was confused at this, I thought this had been resolved and removed completely, so I guess, um, my amendment to the, uh, amendment's going to be, um, you know, I, I guess one thing is, it's, you know, we're, we're trying to streamline government and decrease bureaucratic functions. I did not vote to add this to our budget two years ago, um, and most Tennessee counties don't have an H R department. Um, so I, I do want to, uh, move that we strike this department from the budget in its entirety, and move the liability claims workers' movements' comp function employee back under the Law Director's office where it came from, and move the hiring function back under the Finance Director where it was previously two years ago.
All right, is there a second? Motion and a second. Uh, Commissioner Harris.
Mr. Chairman, I just, uh, like to state that, uh, my wife is an employee with the Summer EMS, and I will be voting my conscience.
All right, Madam Clerk, place that on the board.
So for clarification on the amendment?
It is amendment.
Yeah, may I ask the maker of the amendment a clarif- a question? So my, my preference would be have some monies there for H R consulting type of activities for, if needed. Is the amendment right now is to, is to wipe that out to zero, so there are no monies there, is that the?
Commissioner.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, the Finance Director asked-
If the employees currently do risk management slash enrollments, before they move to, if they're gonna be moved to Mr. Sitler's office, if we could have at least sixty days to transition that stuff back over to Finance?
So I, I guess I'm willing to amend my motion, uh, for a sixty-day extension for, um, that liability claims worker's, workers' comp function and, uh, employee, uh, for that transition period.
All right, is, is that in agreement with the, okay.
So, to clarify that again, so, are, is your amendment, the Human Resource Director line item goes to zero, the Consultants' H R Service line item goes to zero, is that what, effectively what this amendment means? And then that other employee, uh, I don't s- see them listed, but, but they would shift over sixty days? They would shift to the Law Department at, at September one? Is that?
Yes, my intention is to zero that out, I know that, you know, we just absorbed seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars back into the general fund from, uh, a part, part of a penny that was moved last year, uh, we've, uh, captured some more money, so I know if something came up, that there was an H R function needed for whatever reason in October. Uh, I don't, we've got money for that, uh, in the general fund, because we have, during the budget process, been able to put that back, so I, I think it's more of it, it's, it should, if it's needed, uh, it can come back and be asked for, because we do have the, the funds for that, for that one. But hopefully we won't have to use that, but yes.
Commissioner Shu.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I've been consistent on this one from beginning, and I just want to state this for the record, that, um, uh, the real question here is, it's not about any individual, it's about, does the function of H R make sense under the auspices of, of this county government? And, um, I think it's, uh, it, it's clear to me that at a minimum, that answer is, is not, is no, at least in the traditional H R sense, because of the, the fact that, uh, elected officials really have the ability to, to run how they, how they choose, and so policies and so forth set forward, set forth by, uh, an H R department are of no effect. Um, so at, and at best, you're talking about a, a very limited role for H R, so I, you know, I think, at, you know, I thought this from, as I've kind of moved through this process, we can strike it. I agree with Mr. Miss, Mr. Mansfield on this one, and, um, you know, if, if our committee system, particularly the Benefits Committee, uh, determines a need for this in the future, we could move forward and appropriate it, uh, in the next cycle.
And I'm, I'm, I'm okay with either changing my motion to what the amendment is, or I can withdraw my motion and the amendment can become its own motion, wh- whichever, I'm, I'm okay with this amendment, I guess is my point.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, um, one of the reasons for H R Department is to help avert lawsuits. And, you know, I, I don't know that the, uh, Law Office has a lot of extra time right now to avert H R lawsuits, as opposed to other lawsuits which we've been, which we've had, having to deal with, so I'm opposed to this. I believe, I believed, I believed a long time ago, when I first came on the commission and discovered we did not have H R, I believed at that time we should have an H R department, and I will still, I maintain that, so I will be voting no.
Commissioner Boyd.
So I just wanted to add a little bit of factual data, I reached out and I found out there are eighteen counties in our whole state that have H R departments, so I wanted to share that with you, we are moving back into the majority of counties that do not have H R departments. We're not moving in the, we're moving to where everybody else is.
Commissioner Rogers.
Call for a question.
Um, that's not necessary, uh, if you want to-
I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Chairman.
Wait, there, there's no one else in the queue, so I'll place that on the board.
I'll reserve that for the next comment.
Okay, don't wait so long. All right, uh, Madam Clerk.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
The vote is nineteen to four. All right. Think you've got a couple of other, one more, maybe. Oh, that's right, yes, I'm sorry, you're right. Yes, you're right. Uh, Commissioner Shu, uh, Main Commissioner Schmidt.
I don't know if this is allowed at this time, but I will make sure, um, we, um, I made a statement that I was against, uh, travel for any county commissioners a couple of times, um, so I'm making a motion tonight, and again, this isn't personal, but this is in the spirit of cutting where we can cut spending, to remove nine thousand dollars from travel for the mayor, which is on page twenty-nine.
Now, um, right now is, we're on, uh, the main-
Right, well, I didn't, I just want to make sure we're-
Okay.
Okay, well, that's what I'm doing, making a ma-
On this?
Yes, making a amendment to that, yeah, sorry, I wasn't clear.
Is there a second?
Second.
She's saying you're on, cry it and see.
You're not. It's not red, it needs to be red.
There we go, okay, so this is an amendment to this, to pull nine thousand dollars from the travel for the mayor, this is on page twenty-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second, any, Commissioner Mansfield, is this in ridic- dish, is this in regard to that?
Well, it, it's in regards to the mayor's budget, I have a question about what looks like it's a, a mistake, something.
Okay, let's deal with his first, and then, does anyone in the queue have a question about his, uh, amendment? Okay, Commissioner Lambert.
Yeah, I just wondered if we could get some clarification on what that line item may be used for before we cut it, like, is it him, is it his employees, is he doing county business, is he doing to conferences, like what that might be, before we just cut it out?
Uh, I mean, was that directed at me, I think?
I think so.
I think this has been there for some time, I-
All right, I'll ask the County Mayor.
The money used, is used for reimbursements for travel, uh, conferences that we attend to, Nashville conferences and, and elsewhere. Uh, it's used to reimburse those costs, including gas.
I understand that, Mr. Chairman, I guess, or, Mr. Mayor, I guess my question is, what are those conferences for? If we could get some, like, are you just promoting the county, or is it trying to figure out what's best for the different departments, or?
Uh, it depends on what the conference is for. I have one with the National Association of Counties to do work with count, other counties, learn different things that they do to make their county better. We'll also have, uh, I've got, um, the International Association of Assessing Officers. That one to learn a little more on techniques for reappraisal next year since we've got a new assessor to be able to assist him on a more qualified reappraisal.
Now, and anyone want to speak on that, this particular thing? Commissioner.
She put me in the queue, but I, Commissioner Ring, I don't know who was first, I guess.
Who we're talking about, okay, thank you. This puts Sumner County at a major disadvantage. If our county mayor can't be reimbursed for driving to Nashville to talk to the governor about something that might help Sumner County, or talk to our legislators, that's the kind of, that's part of what this money is used for. If you notice, it's, we haven't used anywhere near nine thousand dollars. Last year, I believe it says forty-five or forty-six thousand, forty-six, forty-five, forty-six hundred dollars. I, I, I think this is just, um, you know, cutting a few pennies in order to, uh, which is going to cost us more than a few pennies in, in return, so I will vote against this, thank you.
Mr., I was just going to note, Mr. Chairman, that in two years' time, that, that travel budget's gone from fifteen hundred dollars to nine thousand dollars, and it seems a bit excessive in two years' time for travel. I, I just, I don't know what that's for, but, I mean, that's definitely a pretty big spread, but I just wanted to point out how much it's increased in two years.
Commissioner Jones.
I agree with both Commissioner Mansfield and Commissioner Ring, that does seem a bit excessive, but is the money returned? If it's not all spent, has it ever been returned in the past? And, and what would be the proposal if this money is stripped out? For how would he commute to these events, go to these conferences, or speak with the governor, or travel expenses? Would, how would that be handled from that point on? Does there a proposal in the amendment for that, or can there be?
Do you have an answer to that issue?
I guess that's directed towards the maker of the amendment or Budget Chairman? Is there a way to do it?
To get into queue to speak. So, uh, yeah, I'm going to answer that, and then if that's okay, I'd like to go ahead.
Say, say you're next.
Thanks. So yes, the answer to that is, it, it comes back. So it's an ask, and it would, it would come back if, if it was unspent. And in fact, that's going to drive my, I'm going to, I would like to propose an amendment. And that is that we revert back to right around where it was during the last budget and amend, make, make an amendment to reduce it from nine thousand to forty-five hundred dollars. That's in line with last year.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this amendment? All right, Commissioner Becker, is it on the amendment?
Just a, a comment, is that, I mean, I understand the, I think, the intent of not wanting to pay for travel for things that aren't necessarily related to a commissioner's job, even though I actually have an opinion, if, if we want to improve our ability to be a better commissioner and learn, I, I'm okay with spending some money on that travel too. But regardless, we're talking about the county mayor, I mean, it's some official business, I, I don't, I don't understand why we strip it down to zero. So I don't know if forty-five hundred is the right amount, I mean, was this six thousand last year? You know? So I, I don't know. I, I just wanted to say that if it's official county business, I don't know why we're talking about not wanting to fund it. That's, I don't understand that, that mindset. But I think maybe six thousand, if the maker of this amendment would be okay with six thousand? Okay. All right, thanks.
To this amendment and others that might, uh, come, let, let me say, I, I think, I think what we're doing is good, but I'm not sure that the, this is the appropriate time for such a big item as this. This is a big item, looking at travel and, uh, things of that sort for the county. We shouldn't pick out one. If there's one that's a problem, there are many. And we need to just, I, I think this is not the time to do this. We could be here all night picking. If we see a problem with travel, I think that we ought to put a committee together or send it to Budget with a request and say, "Look, let's look at this whole big issue and see what we need to do and what we need to bring back as a total package." So that's just my thoughts. Commissioner Mansfield.
Not speaking on these amendments, I'm still speaking on my budget.
Because there's so many things that are being, as you say, picked apart. In my opinion, uh, and I'm only one, I would suggest that this budget be sent back to the Budget Committee, and they get their pencils out and use their pencils and figure out what they want to cut permanently and then bring it back. Because we don't have to pass this budget right today. We can pass it next month and get it over with, but this nitpicking is ridiculous. And so I think that if we could send it back and get their, the Budget Committee to get the pencils back out and then bring it back, we'd be, we'd be further ahead of the game than we are just sitting here picking at things. And that's just my opinion. I'd like to make an amendment to send it back to Budget to get it straightened out.
Is there a second? That wasn't quite my thoughts. But is there a second? We're, we're sort of on the same line, but, um, I, I just think that, pardon me for saying this, but something this big, we need to spend a lot of time looking at.
We're not really, we're starting to nitpick, and we should have nitpicked before. And I think it needs to go back to Budget, pick apart what you need to pick apart and bring it back so we're not.
I understand what you're saying, Mary, but unfortunately I haven't heard a second, so. Okay, Commissioner Sho. Okay, a motion and a second to send it back. All right. Any discussion? All right, all in favor say aye. Opposed? No. Okay. All right, uh, we have an amendment now on the floor, okay. Restate, restate what's on the floor.
So I, I originally stated forty-five hundred. Commissioner Becker suggested six thousand, I'm fine with six thousand, so we reduce back to last year's budget for the county mayor's, plus a little bit for inflation. For his travel.
There's a motion and a second to that, and no one in the queue, so all in favor say aye? Aye. Close lights sign, okay. That goes, all right, go ahead.
Uh, we're back on the main now, which is to approve the County General Budget.
Yes. All right, place that on the board.
I, I did, I just wanted to, it seems like, I, I wasn't sure if it was intentional or not on page twenty-nine in the county mayor's budget. I noticed there was a, a new line for maintenance repair of buildings in Okana, and we don't even own anything there. And then a maintenance repair building in Cotton Town for four seventy-five, but it looks, there's two lines below it for postal charges and printing and stationary forms for four seventy-five and five hundred as well. I didn't know if that was a mistake or if that was. I, that's, I just, I just noticed that when we were discussing this, I looked at that, saw that doubled up, so. Okay, so I guess I want to strike that four seventy-five amount and five hundred amount for maintenance and repair in buildings and maintenance and repair, uh, excuse me, um, maintenance repair Cotton Town, maintenance repair buildings in Okana.
Second. There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right, no one in the queue, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close lights sign, all right.
And we're back on the main.
Back on the main motion. Mr. Rogers. All right, uh, since you're the only one. You need to, you need to do this a little sooner, okay? All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Close lights sign, now let's, we'll vote on, put that on the, um, board. Twenty-two affirmative votes and one abstention, okay? Go ahead.
So before we move on, I'd just like to note that I believe this is Commissioner Mansfield's first time voting for a budget, so I'd like to congratulate him for that. And then I move on to twenty-three oh six dash twenty, and that's, uh, the appropriations in nonprofit charitable organizations, I so move. Yeah, it's, and that, that is with the amendment earlier. I just state that that's with the amendment earlier to move forward Sumner.
All right, Commissioner Becker. They couldn't have been serious.
Appreciate it, Commissioner Rogers, it's nice. I, I would just, since, since we removed the hundred thousand dollars for Ford Sumner, I, I would like for that one hundred thousand dollars to be included in our nonprofit charitable organizations allotment that we go through in October.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner, is Commissioner Nguyen, is this in regard to that? Commissioner Bergdorf, is this in regard to that amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I don't like the idea of doing that. I don't think it's right that we take, we, we take property tax money. If you don't pay your property taxes, you don't get to live in your home. But we take your property taxes and then we disperse it to whichever charities we see fit in this body. I feel like that because property taxes are something that you must pay, that it is not within our purview to disperse charitable donations across the county. I don't even like the one, don't even like the one hundred five thousand dollars in there, and I certainly will not support adding an extra one hundred thousand.
Ms. Chairman, point information, I just, uh, I believe this would actually, this, this amendment may be out of order as this would require a new resolution and, and a kind of wholesale change of this portion of the budget. Just want to put that out there, I mean, people can bring up to vote however they want, but. Mr. Wong, you can.
So I'm saying this only for clarification, we need to vote no. Right? Okay. Uh, all in favor say aye? Okay, go ahead.
So where does the, if, if this amendment doesn't pass, where does that one hundred thousand dollars that we removed, where does it go?
Goes back to the general fund.
Revenue expenditures to go back into the general fund.
All right, thank you for that.
All in favor say aye? Close lights sign? All right, no's have it.
And, Ms. Chairman, that concludes my report. Oh, wait, we had, yeah, we still need to vote, dang it, I was getting ahead of myself. Okay, we still have the main on the appropriation of nonprofit charitable.
This is on the board. All right, the vote is twenty-one to two, and the affirmative. All right, report of county officials, the written reports are there in your packet as they usually are each month. Notaries, we'll have that on the board. Yes.
Each Commissioner, record your vote.
Oh, well, that would be good. So move, is there a second? All right, second. All right, we, uh, are now on Standing Committees, Health and Emergency Services.
All right, so this is twenty-three oh six twenty-two, adopting a bad debt write-off policy for emergency medical services, a standard policy that's EMS, seven years with the data service and three years since the last payment. This is just old debt that we probably will never, ever see. We're just going to write it off, clear up the books, and I so move.
Okay, motion and a second, all in favor, oh, all in favor signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Close lights sign.
That concludes my report, Ms. Chairman.
Education Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, these are amendments to take care of summer school, activities, transportation, uh, food, the assistance, uh, the teachers, things like that. We had no problem with them in the committee, and I so move.
You're saying all three?
Well, the, the other one we have no, third one we have no say on.
Okay. And approve, as, all right, all in favor, signify the saying aye?
Aye.
Close lights sign. All right, General Operations.
General Operations has nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Highway.
I believe that Mr. Ellis spoke to Budget about this, but it's just, uh, the resolution twenty-three oh six twenty-five, that was all we met regarding, and it was, uh, it was actually to finish out the, some streets where they meet with Westmoreland, and we were gonna, we get, we were going to give them a quote from, from, Mr. Ellis is going to give the quote, actually, for the four hundred twenty-four thousand, um, for them to, to pay us, for us to, you know, have the opportunity to help them and make it where it's just a smooth transition between, and there's not a division between the Westmoreland city streets and the, and the county streets. And he can explain it more if anyone had any questions, but I figured that you probably would have asked him before then. But, um, I just wanted to kind of state it just so the public would know that it's, it's a way for the county to actually help out the city but still make money on it, because we would be paid for the, the amount that was done.
All right, Commissioner Becker. And the attorney, the attorney is knowledgeable of this too.
So I just want to make sure, I understand, so we're giving zero, zero amount of money to the city of Westmoreland on this? Are we, are we losing money where we could be spending it elsewhere? All right, thank you.
All right, um, there's been a motion and a second, all in favor, signify the saying aye? Close lights sign. Committee on Committees.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is Resource Authority seeks your term. Committee, uh, put forward Chrissy Miller- Item number one is resource authority seeks your term, um, committee, uh, put forward Chrissy Miller to replace Baker Ring expiration is this month, and I so move.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose lights sign. The vote was affirmative. Go ahead.
Library board, uh, Jim Holcomb for Gallatin, Erica Grammer for Millersville, and Kaylee Wilson for Portland, uh, move to group and approve.
All right, is there a second? Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose lights sign.
No, no.
Okay. Two, I, I, I would, I'd rule that the affirmative had it.
Board of zoning appeals, uh, committee on committees, uh, put forward Shannon Bergdorf and I so move.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose lights sign. Okay. Legislative.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Resolution twenty-three oh six dash twenty-six is a resolution requesting the General Assembly to preserve the fundamental right of Tennesseans to keep and bear arms. Um, here's the main point of this resolution, is that most Tennessee voters prefer remove, removing threatening individuals from the community rather than simply taking their guns through red flag laws and leaving those dangerous individuals in the community. So this, what this resolution does, it urges the State General Assembly to protect the fundamental right of Tennesseans to possess firearms and reject any proposed so-called red flag laws, also known as extreme risk protection orders or orders of protection, as being by, requested by Governor Bill Lee and his anti-gun activist supporters, and I so move.
All right, but, motion's been made in a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right.
Resolution twenty-three oh six dash two-seven is ratifying our private act, chapter twenty-nine, which is private acts of twenty-twenty-three prohibiting eminent domain for greenways under certain exceptions. And just want to take a moment, I, I want to thank you guys for supporting this. Um, Commissioner Holmes is sitting in that seat because of, four years ago, I stood on the floor of this commission, uh, for hours debating against what the previous commission was trying to do, um, with putting this, this greenway system in and stealing private property, uh, to benefit private development. And, um, I'm just, it's been a long four-year process. Um, I know that, that Commissioner Holmes is excited about this and her, uh, neighbors are excited about this, all the way up to Cotton Town to the bridal house, folks are excited about this. So, again, I just, it's, it's been four years to this exact meeting, so, uh, I would be remiss not, um, stating that fact. So I appreciate how this has come full circle and I so move to ratify this.
Okay, motion and a second.
Commissioner Holmes second of that.
Pardon?
Commissioner Holmes on the second.
Okay. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights sign.
Item number three is twenty-three oh six dash two-eight is interim appointment for a director for department head vacancy. Um, that is, uh, a resolution, uh, basically stating if there's a vacancy automatically, if there's a trigger in there that, uh, if an employee is put in that position as an interim, they are capped off at fifty percent of the difference between their pay and the director's pay. So there's, I so move.
Sorry, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose lights sign. That's in the affirmative.
Twenty-three oh six dash two-nine is confirming appointment of Robert Tuttle as IT director, I so move.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose lights sign.
Resolution twenty-three oh six dash three-zero is requesting the Tennessee General Assembly to address issues with the Sumner County Election Commission, and I so move.
Okay. Commissioner Nguyen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so, uh, just a few questions here on this resolution. So there's some language in here that says that, uh, Ms. Ashley engaged in misconduct in office. Uh, question is, is, uh, what was, what misconduct occurred? Mr. Chairman?
He's looking.
Oh.
I mean, the resolution states that, and, whereas A, B, C, and D, so, um, of, of what those, those things are, so. Has, I don't have anything else to add to that for you?
All right, so that's pretty vague language for misconduct. Uh, anything specific we can quote or point to as far as an official act of misconduct?
Mr. Chairman, for, uh, hundreds of our votes before, we, we don't need to talk while the votes are talking, we can place a straight gallery.
I, I, I agree, we should remain quiet in here while the commission is taking action. All right, uh, a lot of these things may be vague, Mr. Nguyen, but I'm just going to say that if that is what you're voting on, that's what you need to accept or just vote against.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I still have some more questions. So, I believe in this resolution, it talks about, uh, charges or offenses that Ms. Ashley has, has had as far as legal goes. Do we know, has she been convicted of any of those?
Have we what?
Do we know if she's been convicted of any of those?
Uh, I don't know myself, I mean, I'm just going by the resolution. The resolution is what's on the floor and that's what we're having to vote on.
Right, and, I mean, we're putting language out there that's indicating that, I believe it's indicating that, uh, she's been convicted of these things, but I'm just curious if there was knowledge of her actually being convicted.
Well, I, I, all I can say is the resolution speaks for itself and you'll have to vote it up or down by your conscience. If, if it seems incomplete to you, you will just have to vote that way.
Okay. Uh, and then the word moral turpitude is used, um, do we have any, any specifics on acts that were committed that would be considered a violation of moral turpitude?
Uh, I'm not sure that we need to speak legally any further on that, the lawyer may speak to that, but I don't, not sure that we would need to speak any further to that.
Okay. Uh, also the resolution states that, uh, uh, Ms. Ashley threatened officials. I wasn't aware that there was a threat to an official, so when, when did, uh, Ms. Ashley threaten a official, or I guess who was the official, and then when did she threaten him?
Generally, I would just say, I think it was in the city of Hendersonville, an official there, but, uh, that's, I, I don't have any more information than that.
Okay. Uh, and then there's also language in there about selective enforcement of election rules. Do we have any specifics where there were selectively, Ms. Ashley selectively applied and enforced election rules?
Uh, I'm sure we do, or it wouldn't have been mentioned, but I don't know, I cannot answer that I know that.
All right, so I guess we don't know when or if that actually happened?
I don't.
Okay. Um, and then I guess we don't know what rules were selectively enforced?
I, I think, I think I'd go back to saying that the resolution has to speak for itself.
Okay. Uh, and then it was executed contracts knowingly, uh, requiring the county commission approval, which contracts are we talking about and when were those executed?
I think, I, I think Commissioner, that, without being short or curt about it, that the resolution was put out there, you had an opportunity to study it, I had an opportunity to study it, and I'm just having to vote my conscience yes or no from what I know.
It's okay to say I don't know, I, I mean, because I've read the resolution, these are questions I've got.
I understand, I know, it's okay if I don't know.
Yeah, and so I've studied the resolution and these are the questions I'm bringing forward, and if we don't know the answers, I guess we just don't know the answers.
If, if you don't know the answer, then you may not want to vote for it.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm just surprised that those who put together the resolution don't have the answer to these questions or even knowledge of, of some of these areas concerning this resolution. Uh, that's all I've got, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harrison.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, just out of curiosity, why was this not gone through the committee process? I think it should have probably went to the legislative committee before here.
It, uh, may have, except for the fact that there were a lot of these things that occurred very quickly after committees had met. I think that would be the reasoning. The major incidents. Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um. This question may be better directed, I'll leave it to your discretion to our, uh, county attorney. Do, when we're, this is almost like a censure. Do we have an ethics policy for this body that is actually published on the state website?
Well, the first thing I'd say is that this position, the commission has no authority over, so the state appoints the, commit, uh, the, uh, commission, or the, uh, what am I trying to say? The election commission, who then in turn appoints the, uh, the administrator. So, basically, this resolution is a request to the state to do something about an employee that they essentially put there.
So is it, is, the way I read this, um, the, if I may direct, Mr. Chairman, if I may direct this, this question to the attorney.
You may.
The way I'm reading this, we're calling on the state legislature, the General Assembly, to basically remove this employee. It was, it's my understanding.
And the commission.
And, and, and the election commission, but it's my understanding that our elected legislators from this county are the ones responsible for, for putting the election commission in place, which then in turn selects the administrator, is, is that correct?
I would assume that they would have input, yes.
Okay.
But, uh, that the county's not privy to how or why they arrive at the decisions they do. Once they appoint the commission, the commission gets to pick the, uh, administrator, so how that flowed through or how it got to the way it is today, I couldn't tell you.
Yeah, I just think, I, I just find it fascinating that as the county legislative body, it's basically attempting to censure someone who is not under our purview. And, and that's, I guess that's the point I'm trying to make, they, they, the election administrator, and, and I might also add that, you know, we still live in the United States. Everyone is entitled to due process. You are, this is not Nazi Germany, this is not Russia, you're innocent until proven guilty. And it's my understanding that these charges have not even come before a hearing yet. So, I, I, I find it completely inappropriate that we're dealing with, uh, a resolution that we don't even know the full facts of. There's been several questions that have put forth, no answer has been provided. I just find it fascinating, thank you.
Commissioner Chauve.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so I'll provide answers. I mean, I think we should speak while we're going to do this, so I'll stand up, I'll be the bad guy. So, I think with, with the things that I'm going to say, several, several questions will be answered, and we're beating around the bush here. We have, so let me first address a couple of questions about the legality of this. So we're not removing anyone, we're petitioning the state, uh, to remove, uh, someone and to censure someone. We, we acknowledge, I think this, this acknowledges that we don't have that, that ability, but we can certainly petition. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna actually have an amendment to this, a slight one, but before I get to that, I won't ever, uh, we need to take a step back here, like, people are supposed to trust their government. Well, we need to show that we're worthy of trust. And people will naturally and should naturally be distrustful of government, so let me restate that. But when you see a pattern of activity that illustrates that an individual, uh, is making decisions which are not, uh, sound, then the entire function over which that individual sees can be called into question, and that's what we're talking about here. So, um, we have an individual who's been arrested twice within the span of about six weeks. This individual did threaten with the, the words, and forgive my language, payback is hell, to, uh, a, an elected official for not voting a particular way several years ago. Um, I believe that's what this is being, this is referenced. That, that in, that in and of itself, in my view, is, is cause for some kind of reprimand. So, w- when people see over and over and over that the things that would get them hemmed up, get their, their skirted over and people get away for, get away with it in government, if they're at a, if they reach a certain point, it's like they get tenure, that degrades trust, and that's, there's massive degradation in trust in all levels of government, that's why I ran. So, where we see it, we need to correct it insofar as we can, we, we can't remove somebody individually. So I'm gonna leave one more statement here, two more. If I spoke to many, I'm, I'm really torn on this, I spoke to many people. I, I do believe in, uh, the concept, I mean, deeply in the concept of innocence before proven guilty, and, and watch this. Say this for the record, everybody can see it, put it on a mailer, uh, I, I was arrested many years ago. And I know we've brought up, uh, some people in here have brought up potential arrests from three decades ago. Um, and I was ultimately found not guilty, I didn't do it. But I still got a letter of reprimand from the military. Because when you reach a certain level, you must be beyond reproach. It's not, we're not, we're not charging, we're not punishing somebody, we're holding people accountable and we're holding that office accountable and up to a high standard. And that's what this is about. Now, I believe that i- i- you cannot have, uh, in a position overseeing your elections, it's the most important thing that we do, it's, it's the bedrock of everything we do. So we, the person overseeing this is held, must be held to a very high standard. So the individual I spoke with, I, I was having this conversation with her, and she said to me, you need to acknowledge that there's been some, some argument between the commission, uh, and the budget committee over which I see, and, uh, and the administrator of elections. And what you need to do is put, take away the individual and ask yourself, if that was anybody else, would you make the same recommendation? And that answer to me is very clearly yes. If there's any of you in here, it's not about one thing, if it was a single thing, I would have a very different opinion on this, it's about a pattern. And I can, I can very clearly say, when, when this person asked me that question, it, it, it made it clear to me. So all that said, I apologize to keep us here longer, but that's my rationale for it, I hope I answered questions, I think people should answer, for something like this, I think we owe people to be on the record for it, I think we do. Um, we shouldn't be silent, we should say what we're gonna say, but I would like to make an amendment. I would like to amend the, uh, excuse me, getting older. The third from the bottom, fourth from the bottom, the Board of Sumner County Commissioners, that the General Assembly is urged to vote for a no confidence in public, uh, censure, for a vote of no confidence in public censure of the Sumner County Election Commission board members. I would like to change that to the Board of Sumner, of County, of Commissioners in Sumner County, that the General Assembly of the State of Tennessee, uh, excuse me, is, the, excuse me, the Board of, uh, County Commissioners of Sumner County, uh, urges the- urges the Sumner County Election Commission Board members to hold their employee to the exceptionally high standards necessary for this office.
Uh, is there a second? Is there a second? All right, that fails for lack of a second. Commissioner Becker.
Just a, a couple of things. I, I thought one of the other commissioners was about to do this, so I, I think I will. But, um, I watched the Legislative Committee, the video and so forth, and, and it did, I think it was, uh, I'm not sure who went and drafted this between that committee meeting and tonight, but, but, but this resolution has not been approved by the Legislative Committee. And so I would like to, and coupled with the questions that were asked, that we're not really sure, like, like honestly, I like, like, there's some things that I absolutely understand and completely agree with. There are a couple of these other ones that I don't know, I don't know what it's referring to. So I, I would like to, to understand it better, but I think, I think it needs to go through legislative first. And so I would like to make a motion to defer this to the July Legislative Committee meeting.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion on that? I have several people in the queue, so would you please raise your hand if you want to speak on that specifically? Uh, Mr. Sullivan, Commissioner Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I do think on this it would be prudent. To send this back through Legislative Committee, that gives us one month. That gives the legal system time to see, uh, if these charges, uh, are actually true. And then it, it gives us the, it gives the, the appearance, because there's been a lot of emails going back and forth, and you're doing this, you need to get out of this building. It, 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 it comes across that we're not trying to, uh, poke that hornet's nest, uh, and that we're, that we're solely on the charges that were presented. And, and not, not all of the other things that we might agree or disagree with her on. So I, I, I think a month would, would give us time to make sure that, uh, the court has, has an opportunity to see this.
Anyone else, if you would please raise your hand in regard to this, Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm gonna do something I very well to do.
Tonight, but I'm, I'm gonna do it anyway. I would like to amend Commissioner Becker's amendment to defer until the charges have been fully adjudicated.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion? Let me see, a hand. Commissioner Roden.
I guess we can run down a rabbit hole of hypotheticals here, but what's the outcome of adjudication when they're guilty or innocent? Then what does the commission do? I think this conduct is, is much like raising a child. If you don't correct them at the time of the, the incident, then you lose your bite as you go forward. I think a person that puts a badge on, if this, this type conduct was conducted, the sheriff or chief of police would remove them from their position and put them on a desk somewhere, if not sitting at their house without the badge, commission card, and a gun. I don't think this is much different. That there is a pattern. It, it does continue to unfold. I think it's time that we do something. So I'll vote no.
All right, um, anything, anyone else on this particular thing? All right, we're ready. Commissioner Klein.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remind my colleagues here that this is not about two arrests in six weeks. This is about the grievances that various committees have with her, with, with Ms. Ashley's total disregard for or respect for our legislature here. In regards to the TRC building, there's not been one document that has been brought forward that gave her any authority to go into that building. However, even when she was instructed that the new machines would go into the basement, she went ahead and did what she wanted to do. We are trying to tell the state that we, this is a vote of no confidence. This is not a punishment. We would, I, I agree with some of the others here, that this is not about a person. This is about the actions of the person. I have no grievances with Ms. Ashley at all. But what she has continued to try to do by bulldozing through our rules, the way we run our government, is not acceptable to the functioning of this county. And so I would remind everybody that that's what we're voting on. It's simply a vote of no confidence. I don't have any confidence that she's going to start following the rules or the procedures that we, whether it's general operations or legislative or anything else. If we send this back to legislative, it's probably, whether, whether it gets a positive or negative recommendation, it's coming back here. Why wait? Why wait on any of this? Let's just do it.
All right, uh, without any other, uh, one speaking on this amendment, we will vote on it, and I ask that it be put on the board.
This is on his, this is on his amendment to change my amendment? Okay, so, so, yeah. Mine was to defer to July Legislative. This amendment we're voting on now is to change it to until?
To, to amend the amendment, I, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my, my amendment is to amend Commissioner Becker's amendment to defer until these charges have been adjudicated. Because if they've, if they're not adjudicated and they're proven to be dismissed, then a lot of this resolution, in my opinion, goes away.
All right. All right, you understand now? All right, Miss, Madam Clerk.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
The vote is sixteen to seven, so we're back to the First Amendment. We're sending it back to legislative. Uh, and I'm assuming these that are in are wanting to speak to that. Uh, Commissioner Ring?
Uh, no, sir, to the, uh, General.
Not to the amendment?
Motion, no.
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
May motion.
Commissioner Lambert?
May motion.
Commissioner Nguyen?
I'll speak to this one.
Pardon?
I'll, I'll speak to this amendment. Yeah, I, I, I think we do need to send it back to committee. There's a lot of questions, and, you know, I asked several questions, and there were essentially no answers that were provided. I, I do find it interesting to hear, uh, especially from, you know, comments from Mr. Chauvin. I appreciate him sharing what he shared, uh, that, that a track record of someone, uh, is reason for not having them in a position. Uh, I, I think that's, it's very sound logic, uh, to, to have that and to use that as, as someone's past is a predictor potentially of their future. Uh, and, and not being from thirty years ago, but even from a year ago. So I, I just found that to be very interesting. But I do think that this does need to go back to, uh, to committee. Just to, one, for the committee to actually review it, uh, talk through it, validate some things that may be in here, uh, and maybe get some specifics behind some of these, uh, what appear to be, I don't wanna call them unfounded accusations, but there's definitely some accusations in here that we weren't able to provide any, any sort of backup evidence or comments, uh, to support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Mansfield.
Um, yeah, in the queue behind them, I'm not speaking on this amendment.
All right, uh, we're ready to vote on this amendment, amendment. Madam Clerk. A yes vote will be to send it to legislative, a no vote, uh, would be back to the main motion.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
The negatives have it fourteen to nine. All right. Uh, Commissioner, well, there's no one in.
Commissioner Ring was in first, I was second, and Commissioner Lambert was third.
Okay, uh, all right, Commissioner Ring.
Uh, yes, sir. Um, I'm gonna clarify a couple of things. One is, the state legislature does not appoint people to the election commission. They recommend legislators in the district, or the political party, which if they don't have any legislators, recommend to the state election commission, and they're the ones who make the appointment as the state election commission. As a former election commissioner, my term ended, I, I came on the commission, the county commission prior to her appointment, so I was not involved in that at all. The other thing is, and this hasn't been brought up here tonight, I appreciate that, but somebody on, somewhere on Facebook, social media, somebody made the accu, uh, the accusation has been made that Ms. Ashley's husband does not have dementia. I've probably known Ms. Ashley and her husband longer than anybody else in this room, other than maybe Commissioner Hyde. But yes, I, I heard about his dementia probably five years ago. Uh, I know she's attempted to place him in a, in a memory care center. So that, I just want to clarify that because it has been spread out on social media. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Now, I, I'm giving just a little bit of leeway, but, uh, Commissioner Mansfield.
Next, it's Commissioner Jones and Lambert.
All right, Commissioner Jones, we got messed up when everybody was taken out before, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, for those that have brought up the, uh, the point about the state, um, not doing anything about this, or that it wasn't in their purview, or about this process in general and being concerned about it, I just, uh, want them to know that I have contacted somebody at the state level, and it was under their advisement for us to do this, so that they could hear it and make appropriate actions on this. So this resolution is totally in order, and in fact, what the state would prefer us to do, they agreed that this person is in a spiral. There's some things going on in this person's life that needs to be taken care of, and they need to step away to take care of those things. Law broken or not broken needs to be adjudicated. I agree with all that. But the point is, there's a lot going on. This person does not need to be in this position, and they need to handle the business of their home right now, and, and they, they need to look at that seriously, and the state has asked us to do it.
I'd say who was in next, Mr. Lambert, Mr. Lambert?
I'm gonna try to say this very tactfully. I may need to ask the law director, but you may be able to answer it, 'cause you've been in government for as long as you have been.
I, I probably will not want to, but go ahead.
My question is, can a body censure someone that's not in that body? Like, can we censure a private citizen, or can a, a legislator censure us, or?
The lawyer might, I understand what you're saying, and the lawyer might, uh, say differently, but in my opinion, this body could, uh, censor the Red Cross if they were wanting to. But, you know, it, it's just, and, and I'm not being
Okay.
mean about it, it's just,
No, that's what I
we're saying this is our opinion.
Can the law director clarify that, just to, to be sure?
It's very much that we're, we're asking to be heard about a certain situation. I would equate it with, if I'm on a passenger plane, I think my pilot's drunk. I'm not gonna wait for the ruling from the courts to tell me that I might copilot fly the plane, so uh, that's kinda how I view this with the, the state is, we've got absolutely no control over this, but would you please do something about it?
Well, I appreciate your analogy. That didn't answer my question. My question was, can a body censure someone that's not in that body?
No, and I don't believe the commission's doing that.
Okay, so my, here's where I was getting to that, is previous commissioners have stood up and said, you know, words matter or documents matter, that she hasn't produced any documents that to show that she can move into one building or the other. And I agree with all of that. My, but I do think because words matter, what I have one of the problems with is that we're asking people to public censure the commission, the, uh, or sorry, the election commission, the administrator, all these things that they cannot do 'cause she's not in that body. So I would like to make an amendment. We remove public censure from paragraph fifth from the bottom and fourth from the bottom.
All right, the motion's been made. Is there a second to remove those, that phrase? Motion and a second. Any discussion? Let me see, hands on just this, removing that phrase. Commissioner Chauvin.
I'd like to offer an amendment to this. I'd just like to offer an amendment to yours. I, I, you know, what I, what I'm trying to get out of this is that we're, we, so one, we're, we're not censuring here. No, nowhere in here does it say that we are censuring, Ms. Ashley. What I, what I believe the intent of this is, is to, as our law director state, stated, was to ask those who do have that authority to take that action. So I, I do have a little bit of concern, and that's why I made this motion earlier, about, uh, trying to censure the election commission itself, whereas we should be petitioning the election commission. So I, I would, I'm, I'm not comfortable removing it with, uh, with respect to, uh, Ms. Ashley herself, but I am comfortable removing it from, uh, reference to the, uh, election commission. So I, I, I would offer that amendment, and if somebody will second it, or if you would take it.
Point of clarification, Mr. Chairman, that, I, I think it's a misunderstanding that says we're asking them to censure. We're not censuring. If you read back through there,
Right.
and it's asking the state to
Law directors, they don't, they don't have, they can't do that. That's all I'm saying. We gotta remove that.
Just to, just to be clear, what I'm stating is that I,
Go ahead.
What I'm stating is that I would rather this read, that we are asking the election commission
to remove this person. And that we are urging the state
To ask the election commission the same, not urging the state to censure the election commission. That is what I'm, that's the thrust of
That's my intent, yes. Remove censure from the conversation and say like, hey, we don't have, because based off of what Mr. Sittler said, they don't have the authority to do that, because she is not a member. That position or the commission is not a member of that body.
I, well, we're, we're saying, we're a little bit different. What I'm saying is that, I'm, I'm, I'm suggesting
Move that language as it's directed toward the election commission, but keep it as it is directed toward the election administrator. So I don't know if you accept that. I don't know if I'll get a second, but that's how I would rather this read.
Uh, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
I don't
There's a second.
Accept that.
And in regard to that, would you raise your hand if you want to speak to that? All right, those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
So, we're back to the amendment.
We're back to the previous amendment.
Did you have anything else, Commissioner Mansfield?
You gotta vote, you gotta vote.
You gotta vote for that amendment.
Oh, okay, all right. Put that on the board. Who else?
Will you restate that amendment?
Mr. Chairman, could you restate the amendment?
I'll ask the maker to say what he wanted to.
To remove public censure from paragraphs, now there will be a law in the next one. So leave everything but the state ought to censure these, is a lot of it, so they don't have to worry about that.
Before we vote on that, the lawyer wants to clarify what he actually said.
I was talking about this commission could not censure her. I think the state has a broader authority to make that reach. That was my only point.
So they can't censure her.
They, they're the only ones beyond us that would have the ability to reach her. That, they're our only recourse to ask for redress.
All right, so we will vote now on this, uh, this motion.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Motion fails fourteen to nine. We're back to the main motion. Commissioner Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I may, I may be superseding Commissioner Mansfield, you might have been, okay, thank you, sir. One of the commissioners mentioned that he had contacted someone within our state elected officials. Would he be
had contacted someone within our state elected officials, would he be willing to state who he had contacted?
I, I don't want to get into that, that, that's not what we're really debating here, uh, you know, and one thing, uh, and this is just to put us on the right track with discussion, I have allowed a lot of leeway that I, I think is good to a certain extent, but I'm gonna start bringing people back into a tighter framework, because we're just discussing and asking questions that should be done in Committee and elsewhere, in other words, I would like for you to state your opinion, this is not an interrogation session here, you understand, stand up, state your opinion, don't be asking everybody questions, okay, um... Pardon? We're not gonna be here that much longer. Okay, all right, uh, go ahead, Commissioner Mansfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, I just, um, find it a little bit disingenuous and somewhat hypocritical, um, some of the comments being made tonight, given some of the comment, the comment made a month or so ago about a slate of appointees, uh, and I'm gonna read this, uh, there was a comment made, there's an appointee on here that does, does have multiple instances of financial impropriety, as well some criminal activity, this type of documented behavior is in our legal system, just tells me this person has a history of looking after their own self-interest over what is right, that comment was made from the fullness commission as a impetus to vote no on a slate of eight people casting aspersions on, instead of picking one person, um, and saying that outright, and so I, I find it just kind of ironic that the opposite is being made, when there is, um, actual, a person being named in a list of things and documented behaviors, whereas in this one, there, there wasn't any of that, it was just a blanket statement made, so, when, when you say, this person has a history of looking after their own self-interest over what's right, and they use that as an impetus not to vote for a slate of people, but then you're, you're going the opposite side here, I, I just find that hypocritical and disingenuous, uh, Mr. Chairman, I just would be remiss in not saying that as, as a counterargument.
Commissioner Lambert? All right, thank you, all in favor, seeing if I've been saying aye? Pardon? It doesn't matter, question's been called.
Lose, you lose, brother.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, light sign?
No.
All right, put it on the board.
My light would turn green, or red.
Go ahead.
Each Commissioner record your vote.
Mr. Chairman, just a point of clarification, we're not voting for the resolution, correct?
No, this is a call for a question, and, and for everybody's information, when the question is called, and I've got Roberts Rules of Order here in the desk, things cease and the vote is taken, uh, that's the way it is. I had recommend, I had recognized Commissioner Lambert. And I have the floor, all right, um... Is there anybody here that was confused that they were voting on, uh, call for the question? Okay, thank you. All right, uh, we will now vote on, uh, this resolution. All right, the resolution passes sixteen to seven, um, now, I don't want there to be any confusion about calling for the question, because we have that happen quite often, I saw Commissioner Lambert in the queue, I called on Commissioner Lambert, Commissioner Lambert called for the question, Roberts Rules of Order, and I didn't follow this one night, and I think that it was Commissioner Mansfield that called me down that night, yes, things cease, you don't go any further on call, if someone calls for the question, you vote on it, to determine whether you go forward or not, and it's, it doesn't matter if you were in the queue, or whether you were not in the queue, things cease and you vote on the call for the question.
I completely agree with you, my thought was that Commissioner Mansfield had the floor, and that Commissioner Lambert had yielded the floor, and that I did, I did not hear you yield the floor to Commissioner Lambert that second time, I heard him speak up, because his light happened to be red, and it just happens to be that way every now and then, so...
But, but everybody understands what I'm saying, when, when the call for the que, when there's a call for the questions, things stop, and I think that's the way Roberts Rules of Order states it, is that everything stops and you vote on that issue, okay, uh, Budget Committee. Commissioner Harrison, did you want to say, Commissioner Harrison, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I'd like to, uh, defer twenty-three oh six thirty-one and twenty-three oh six, uh, six thirty-two, uh, to next month, uh, the first one, we, we're gonna be operating on a new budget, so we need to defer that and rewrite this, um, and then for the, uh, the, the twenty-three oh six thirty-two, forgive me, uh, Mr. Wong, could you refresh my memory on why we needed to defer that one?
If, if everyone over here, please speak to me, okay? So what, what?
Uh, so I, I just, uh, without objection, I'd like to defer twenty-three oh six thirty-one and twenty-three oh six thirty-two.
So move.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, light sign?
All right, so moving twenty-three oh six thirty-three, uh, this appropriated a hundred twenty-eight thousand nine hundred twenty-eight dollars from General Fund, uh, this is for the trustees, uh, commission, uh, this is just year-end projections, so move.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, light sign?
Uh, twenty-three oh six thirty-four, the sixty-four thousand, uh, yeah, this is increased debt collection cost for EMS, uh, so move.
Is it a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, light sign?
Uh, twenty-three oh six, uh, dash thirty-five, this is, uh, forty-five thousand four hundred and seventy dollars, uh, for the library and sixty-two thousand two hundred and thirty, uh, for the county administration building, this is flow-through funding, uh, and insurance recovery, so move.
Motion and a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, light sign?
Uh, twenty-three oh six thirty-six, and the, the last one of the day, uh, this is, oh yeah, it's moot, we don't need it, that's my report.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, no, wait, just one minute, I, I do want to commend everybody, I, I, I was here one year, several years ago, at a budget time, when I was here until about one o'clock, and we had to do some special things according to Roberts Rules of Order when we went over another day, and I told many people that there is no possible way that we could do that tonight, make it tonight, so I commend you in a, in a situation that was very bad, uh, motion to adjourn?